All right, we'll get the Planning Board session for February 1st, 2018 started. I guess roll call?
Opening statement first.
Oh, opening statement, sorry.
It's okay. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 19th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 19th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 19th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Roll call?
Former Mayor Gatto.
Present.
Mr. Husser.
Here.
Chief Kudrick.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Schneider, I have not heard from. Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Mr. Boyle.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro.
Here.
Mayor Berger has been excused. Chairman Nash has been excused. And Vice Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and also take a moment of silence for our first responders and our military serving abroad.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Eileen, do we have approval of minutes?
Do we need a motion?
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers.
Any correspondence?
Only what was mailed to the members.
Does anybody have any comments that they want to discuss about that correspondence?
This is the one from 41 Randolph.
Yes.
That?
It is correspondence, but it relates to an application that is a noticed application, so you can discuss it, but not tonight. We have to wait until the night that we have 41 Randolph, and I intend on addressing that letter that night.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Resolutions, case number SP-1038, Muhammad Hussein. Eligible voters are Mayor Gatto, Chief Kudrick, myself, Mr. Boyle, and Mr. Nacastro. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve as written. Second.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay. Do we have a motion for approving Planning Board attorney for appointing Ronald Cuchario from Weiner Law Group, LLP, for 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a mo...oh, sorry.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse, sorry. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay. Do I have a motion for Planning Board engineer reappointing Laura Newman from CME Associates?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Actually, Mr. Boyle, you're not eligible, I'm sorry.
Second, I'll second it.
Thank you. Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay. Do I have a motion for Planning Board planner reappointing Peter Van Denkoi from CME Associates?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay. Do we have a motion for Planning Board Certified Tree Expert appointing Sherry Spearow from CME Associates?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Okay. Review of submission waivers before the board. We have case number SP-1041, Smith Family Properties for minor site plan.
Can I sit?
Yes, that is a microphone.
Do you need the handheld mic?
No, unless the board has an objection, I'm...I prefer to sit. My name's Patrick Acasano. I am here on behalf of the Smith Family Properties LLC. We are here this evening seeking a minor site plan approval in the meet of what we're going to be discussing and requesting.
This is just submission waivers, I think, tonight. This is where you would be granted, you know, checklist items where you are seeking to have the requirements waived, and then you'll come back for your substance of your...
Okay. Forgive me, we're lonely looking for the waivers.
Right. So, and actually, Mr. Acasano, the normal process we do, which usually makes it a little quicker, is Laura will just go through the list of the requested waivers. She'll let you know if she has any objections, you know, to any of the requests.
That sounds wonderful. Shall I bring up Mr. Ward?
If you want, but I'm just going to turn it over to Laura now. Do you swear or affirm on the testimony about to give this board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
So, board members, we have a report dated December 7th, 2017, which specifically outlines the submission waivers in item four, page three. I would note for the record that this is actually a minor site plan with no improvements proposed. It's a change of use within the building. They have indicated that in the future they will be back for a major site plan, but the scope of this application is minor. It's within the building, and there are no site improvements proposed at this time. So, given the nature of that app...of the application and that there's no site improvements proposed on the plan, we take no exception to the granting of the waivers as outlined in item four, specifically A through R, for the purposes of deeming this application complete.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect.
I'm sure you don't have any objection to that, Mr. Acasano.
I couldn't have said it. Indeed, I couldn't have said it as well.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Entertain a motion?
Someone wants to do a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the some...is it submission waivers?
Correct, submission waivers.
Right, for SP-1041, Smith Family Properties.
Second.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Acasano, the next step would be if you just contact Laura's office, we'll bring you in for the professional review conference, and then you get on, you know, our next available agenda.
That's fine, I'll probably be praying. Okay. But thank you very much. Thank you, John.
Have a good day.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, have a good night.
You're welcome. You too. Okay. Next bit of business is our first application for the board, case number SP-1035, Joseph Wilhelm. Eileen, would you like me to read the eligible voters?
You can if you want, and while you're at it, both Mr. Boyle and Mr. Seaman are eligible voters because they certified.
So eligible voters tonight are Mr. Gatto, Mr. Kudrick, Mr. Russo, myself, Mr. French is not here, and Mr. Boyle and Mr. Seaman.
Mr. Chair, I know we have multiple attorneys here tonight. I think we should just start by the attorneys entering their appearances and their...who their clients are. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, for the record, Todd Cohen for the applicant, Joseph Wilhelm.
Mr. Gazarovski?
My name is Ron Gazarovski. I have offices in Red Bank, New Jersey. I represent an interested party in this matter, Jason Property Owner, John Stravens. He is appearing in opposition to this application.
Are we getting that on paper?
No, if you sit, that's a mic right there.
Yeah, there's a mic at the table, so if you sit down...
You didn't pick me up?
No.
That one's better if you're sitting, yeah.
Okay. My name is Ron Gazarovski. I'm an attorney with offices in Red Bank, New Jersey. I'm appearing this evening on behalf of Mr. John Stravens, who is the adjacent property owner, appearing in opposition to this application.
Okay, both counsel, I think at the conclusion of the last hearing, everyone was going to go back and try and make best efforts to see if the parties could resolve whatever their differences were. It is my understanding that although good faith effort was made, that there is not an agreement between the parties as to modifications to the application. Is that correct?
That's correct. I know that Mr. Cohen advised me that they have, in fact, made slight modifications in buffer. I've seen that discussing with my client. Mr. Cohen briefly discussed this matter with my client in the hallway when I was there, and they are...they are not in agreement as to this matter.
Okay. And then just before we get started, Mr. Gazarovski, do you have any objection to this board's jurisdiction to conduct the hearing tonight?
Well, I would note an objection to the notice. I reviewed the notice, I reviewed the past history of this case, and I note that back many years ago, I think in 1999, there was in fact a resolution for minor subdivision as well as a use variance dealing with the lot, which is the subject matter of this hearing. At that particular time, the property was in the HD1 zone, there was an existing residential house on it, and a variance was...a use variance was granted for that house to remain there. I think there should have been reference made to that resolution in the notice because in effect we're changing a resolution for minor subdivision along with variances being granted. There's no reference in the notice to that happening.
Mr. Cohen?
I don't know why we would need to notice the previous resolution from 1999. In our notice, our notice clearly indicates what this application is for, and during the testimony previously presented, all that information was placed on the record, so I don't believe that is necessary.
I think being on the record and being in the notice are two different things.
I would agree with that. So, basically, the law on notice is that it has to provide enough information to allow, you know, the common layman to understand generally what's going on, and in order for them to make a decision as to whether they want to come to the hearing, whether they want to come to Town Hall and review records. So, there is no use variance issue anymore because the proposal is to replace the house with a use that's permitted. So, you know, I think the notice was adequate in terms of advising of that use. I believe the notice listed the variances, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Including the undersized lot?
Yes.
So, it listed the variances that were being requested. So, I think that a member of the community would have enough information to determine whether they wanted to look at the plans or come to the hearing. Incidentally, at the first hearing, I think that's...I don't know that, Mr. Cohen, you were aware of the resolution when you drafted the notice. I think we learned that maybe in the middle of the first hearing, that that resolution existed. My recommendation would be that the board has jurisdiction because there was enough information to reasonably alert the public as to the nature of the application. I...also, I mean, I've read most of the notice cases. I've never seen a case that said you had to reference the terms of a prior resolution, except if you were seeking relief from a condition of a prior resolution. So, that would be my recommendation to the board, that you can proceed. But, you know, Mr. Gazarovski's objection, you know, be noted in the record.
Agreed. Thank you.
So...
It's my decision to proceed?
I would...as the hearing officer, it is. I would recommend, you know, straw poll, though, just to support that.
All right. Do we want to take a quick straw poll to continue with this application? Yes? Okay. Please proceed, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You might recall we were here last on October 19th. Previously to that, we were here August 17th, where most of the case was presented. We took the comments from the board to heart, and after the October 19th meeting, we resubmitted plans, which in essence added a larger buffer to the property and eliminated a side yard setback variance. We've also received a new review letter from CME dated November 30th since these plans were submitted and various inter-agency reports which we're also prepared to address. And with me this evening, Mr. Graham McFarland, professional engineer and planner who was previously sworn, and his expertise in those areas acknowledged by the board. I would like him to continue his presentation at this time.
Okay.
Mr. McFarland, I just remind you, you remain under oath.
Thank you. Yes, quite briefly, as discussed by Mr. Cohen, we did submit revised plans, taking into consideration comments from the board as well as some input from the adjoining property owner. Most significantly, we've added a buffer to the west perimeter of the property that, you know, abuts the adjoining on lot 34.02. Your ordinance only requires a 10-foot buffer for a lot of this size. However, we're now providing a 30-foot buffer with what we consider four-season planting, a mixture of deciduous trees and coniferous trees and shrubs, again, to provide that four-season buffer. The original application, we were asking for a rear yard setback variance, which we have eliminated. We now comply with ordinance requirements where 27 feet is required and is proposed. In order to satisfy that, we did adjust the building footprint and the gross floor area slightly from the initial application. The initial application that the board saw and we previously presented had about 9,256 square feet of a gross floor area. The plan you see before you tonight has about 9,093 square feet of gross floor area. This revised plan requires 31 parking spaces by your ordinance, and we are providing 34 parking spaces, so we're still a little bit above what the ordinance requires, so we do certainly meet that particular standard. We also did move the location of the dumpster. Originally, the dumpster was proposed, again, closer to that west property line, so the dumpster has been moved, so it is, of course, is inside the buffer, and now it is about 45 feet or so from the property line, where originally it was located only about 10 or 12 feet from that property line. So, our opinion is we've taken some considerable concessions and made some considerable changes to try to minimize any impact to the adjoining property owner. Keep in mind that this property is zoned HD1, professional offices is the, I believe is the first permitted use outlined in your ordinance, and of course, that's the reason why we're here before the planning board and not going before the zoning board. We, of course, did receive the review letter from CME Associates dated November 30th, and, you know, we will agree to comply with any technical comments outlined therein. Just a couple of matters to go over very briefly to make sure that we're all on the same page. I'm going to start with the sign first. If the board recalls, we did have some discussion on the signage previously and whether a variance or a waiver was required for the location of the proposed signs. In my opinion, the plan that we presented complies with your ordinance, where 10 feet minimum is required from the property line to the sign, and that is what we have proposed. Your ordinance section, however, does indicate that 20 feet is required for signs that are located along a highway. My opinion, that would apply to the HD1 zone where the property is along Route 9. I certainly don't consider Clayton Road or Kent Road highways, so in my opinion, your ordinance is asking for 10 feet distance from the right of way to the sign, and that is what we have proposed for each of our signs that are along Kent Road and Clayton Road. So, again, my opinion is we comply with the ordinance requirement. I think we have a technical design waiver required for the lighting intensity, and we're just going to ask for that waiver. We have provided lighting that's in accordance with IES standards and is suitable for the application. Again, with our change in providing that buffer and shifting the parking lot a little bit to the right, the impacts of any lighting are certainly going to be totally negligent. There is no lighting proposed to leave the property boundary, so we're consistent with ordinance requirements in that regard. We have a...I guess we have a design waiver in regards to areas between parking area and building shall be landscaping, and the majority of the southern side of the proposed building is not landscaped. That's the frontage of the building. We do have landscaping proposed. I'm going to just refer to the landscape plan, which is sheet seven, and you said if you want to take a look at it. If the board recalls...
Sure.
Want this more?
No, if you want this more, that's...
Okay. This landscape plan, if the board recalls, when we originally presented the application, again, the buffering, buffer area was only 10 feet wide, now it's 30 feet wide, so that has been increased significantly. And also, when we originally submitted the application, we did not have perimeter buffering proposed around the edges of the parking lot. We have added that perimeter buffering. And we have also added landscape planters along the front of the building to try to satisfy the intent of the ordinance, but your ordinance is very specific in what it requires, and I would agree that, you know, we do need a, you know, to me, a very slight design waiver from that particular section. The last item, which we did speak about previously, is the contribution to the township tree fund. In lieu of providing all of the plantings on site, we would propose to make the contribution based upon the tabulation that's indicated on our plan. Again, we did discuss this previously, but just wanted to touch on that again. Technically, your ordinance requires us to obtain a waiver to make the contribution in lieu of providing all of the replacement trees on site, so we will be asking for that. The rest of the letter outlines some technical requirements, which we'll agree to satisfy all of those. Just one other item to discuss, though, is comment 4C in Laura's letter talked about a 10-foot-high fence along the westerly property line. Neither Mr. Cohen nor I recalled discussion about that 10-foot-high fence. If the board feels that's appropriate, we're not going to object to it, but our memories failed us on any discussion related to the 10-foot-high fence, so we would just like some clarification on that particular item.
Well, we weren't limited, you know, in our review to everything that was stated at the last hearing, so...
No.
What in particular is your question?
My question is if the board desires a 10-foot fence along the west boundary. We didn't...neither Todd nor I recalled any discussion about it. However, the comment is in the letter, so if it's something that the board feels is necessary, we don't object to providing, but our opinion is it's not necessary based upon the level of landscaping that we have provided.
There was definitely a discussion regarding the buffer area, what would be addressed that we wouldn't in fact address, because my notes don't reflect anything about a 10-foot fence, but it's...
Well, the issue is that's consistent with the ordinance for the buffer design, so I think that that's probably why you had agreed to it. The ordinance has very specific standards for what can be in the buffer area, and at the time when that area was smaller, those were suggestions that had been made and agreed to. I mean, I couldn't give you the meeting date it was agreed to today, but...
At the August meeting, probably.
Correct.
While we were keeping the 10-foot buffer.
That's correct.
But now we've increased it to the 30 feet near the planted.
So, Laura, does that require relief? I mean, do your ordinances still the same?
It does.
Is that a waiver or a variance?
That is a variance.
So, just maybe some testimony on why this is superior to what the ordinance requires and why there's no detriment?
Instead of the berm and fence.
Right.
It's more aesthetic for the neighborhood.
Right. Well, we believe that, first of all, the buffer we provided is more than suitable to provide the same intent of what your ordinance requires. Again, we do have a 30-foot buffer with various levels of landscaping proposed. We believe that this is more aesthetically appealing as opposed to a fence that, you know, that provides a barrier. And that's certainly up to the board's discussion.
So, if I could just walk the board through this, we've dealt with this on many applications, but under our ordinance section, which specifically requires buffers and screening, we have a section that says the required buffer between a residential and a commercial or industrial project shall contain 50 feet-wide four-season buffer unless such non-residential use is pre-existing, in which case the residential use shall provide the buffer. The buffer shall consist of at least two of the following components: landscaping, fencing, or walls at least 10 feet high; landscape berm at least six feet high; a building setback measured from the buffer line of at least 200 feet with a grade change of less than 20%; with groups of plantings and trees located to enhance architectural features of the structure and offer a break to large open areas; a parking area setback at least 100 feet and screened as required under the off-street parking provisions.
So, as of right now, without the fence, are they always satisfying one of those requirements?
That's correct, and I'd have to look to see if they bermed that to the six-foot height as well.
This is really a non-issue because you're willing to comply to do it, so just to make the application a little cleaner, we move the variance and you get the fence, and there's no more discussion.
We can do that, and we may end up doing that in a minute, but I'd just like my engineers to address the fact of why a 50-foot buffer wouldn't apply here.
Why, I'm sorry, what?
We don't believe that that 50-foot buffer applies in this particular case.
Right. As I understand, the ordinance contains two thresholds for buffer requirements. The primary, which is sites that are over one acre, and this property is not over one acre, so it does not require a 50-foot buffer. By ordinance, this property only requires a 10-foot buffer, and again, we're providing a 30-foot buffer. If the board is of the opinion that the buffering and the fencing is required, I mean, we just want to make it clear that we'll be happy to provide the fence if the board feels like...if the board feels that is the most appropriate solution for this particular problem. I don't believe, based upon the intensity of development and based upon the level of buffering that we've already provided, that the 10-foot fence is necessary, but frankly, I'm going to defer to the board's opinion on that particular issue.
What's the stretch of that 10-foot black fence?
I'm sorry?
What's the length of that? That 10-foot high fence?
About 170 feet.
That's...
That's... We just didn't think it would...
We just didn't think it would be aesthetically pleasing to the neighbor. I mean, it's just a ten-foot fence.
Yeah, that, that property lot is about a hundred and seventy feet long.
I also consider the vandalism. I mean, Clayton Road has been notorious for vandalism. The radio station that was there was repeatedly vandalized with, with spray painting. This is just an open...
Billboard.
A ten-foot-high fence for that long is just an open invitation for vandalism. That's the way I look at it.
Maybe there'd be a fence proposed. Maybe there'd be two of the fence proposed.
Pete, have you looked at their landscaping?
Yes, I have. And one of the questions I have is, is this a four-season landscaping plan? What level of, of screening would that provide year-round?
Well, I, I believe it would provide a very, very thorough screening. I mean, it's hard to put a, it's hard to put a, put a number on it, even though it's, it's four-season, there is gonna be, of course, some variation during the, during the course of the year. But if I have, I mean, if I have to guess and put a number on it, I'd say it's gonna provide at least seventy to eighty percent visual screening. So, I think it's gonna be a, a very significant screening. And frankly, if you guys had any, any technical comments, we'd certainly be happy to, you know, to work with you guys to make sure it is to your level of satisfaction.
Okay. What, what height will the plantings be from initial planting?
Again, it does, it does contain a, a variation of species that range, that range from, you know, shrubs that are gonna be eighteen to twenty-four inches at the time of planting to, to trees that are gonna be eight-foot-high at the time of planting, which, of course, are all gonna, gonna grow and infill that space over time.
Okay. Since this is a, an alternative proposal to a fence, is there any way to increase the, the visual screening from above seventy percent to closer to a hundred percent?
Sure. We would certainly work with you if we wanted to either add, whether it was adding plants or maybe adding some, some other species that, that maybe you could recommend for, recommend to us that you've used on other sites in the township.
And I'm sorry if I missed it, but what, what level of berming or elevation as opposed to the elevation of the parking area?
The, the grading plan right now does not call for any berming associated with the, with the buffer. The, the site will sit about three feet above the, the existing grade at the, at the property line. So, the site itself, because, you know, the grade naturally goes that direction, so at, at the, at the limit of the landscaping, so where our site work begins, where, where that, where the, where the parking lot ends on the west side, that is about three feet above the grade at the property line.
Okay, so, so the elevation of the parking area is actually three feet higher than the, than the west?
Than the elevation at the property line.
Okay.
Correct.
Has that been taken into consideration in terms of the elevation that headlights would be facing that direction versus the landscaping type?
Yes, it has. But, but again, we would, we would certainly work with your office if you had any, any other comments. If you wanted to incorporate some, some berming in there, we do have room to do it, so we could elevate that landscaping. I, I don't think we could really accommodate six feet, but we could elevate that, raise that landscaping probably two to three feet throughout most of that area if you, if you felt that would provide a better visual solution.
As far as, I guess that gets into site grading and other things, but with respect to the area that's adjacent to the parking lot, I, I think that would bring screening at least at that level of, of headlamps and vehicles closer to a hundred percent year-round with some berming. Just a, just a thought.
I have a question for Ms. Newman. It's my understanding that this site is less than an acre because it needs a variance because it doesn't have enough land to meet the ordinance's requirements. It's my understanding that this, from your report, that this site really needs eighty-thousand square feet. So, can you, can you, can you please reiterate the requirements for the fifty-foot buffer for...
With the, well, to indicate, to go clarify what the applicant is saying, they're saying that because their lot is under an acre, they don't meet the requirement for a fifty-foot berm. But I think the board needs to consider, and we've spoken about it before, is that this lot was created and is an undersized lot as it exists.
Right. I have a legal position on that, but I wanna be able to ask Mr. McFarland some questions before, before I get to it, 'cause I think it's very perceptive. I think that, that's a very important issue to consider in the, the variance that's required for the undersized lot. But, you know, I think I need a little colloquial with Mr. McFarland in order to develop a few more facts, and then I can provide my legal analysis.
Okay.
That goes directly to your, to your question.
Okay. Thank you.
You have anything else? I may have more questions. Is, is that the, the completion of your testimony?
Yes.
All right. So, my first question has to do with the prior zoning board approval, where the zoning board found, based upon the evidence at that time, and I'll, I'll just cull out the, the relevant portion, the board finds that, given the shape of the property, lack of lot frontage, the lack of water and sewer service, it would be an extraordinary hardship to require this parcel to be used solely for commercial development. So, what changed from when the predecessor, I guess, came in for the use variance and said this lot was, it would be extraordinary hardship to require this lot to have a commercial use to now where it's gonna have a commercial use?
Well, I, I don't know if I can really offer an, an opinion as to what was in the board's head when they, when they put that, that sentence or...
I think what was in the board's head was the proofs that were put before it by the applicant at that time.
Right. But unfortunately, we, we weren't there at, at that, at that time. You know, as I, as I look at, at this application and we look at the, look at the ordinance standards, again, this property is in the HD1 zone, it's, it's an office proposed, which is consistent with, with the zoning requirements, and the fact that previous application was, you know, where, where the property was subdivided, created the use variance for their residential use within the commercial, commercially-zoned property. And now, we're attempting to bring it into conformance with, with the zone requirements.
Well, you're not bringing it into conformance with the zone requirements. They used to need relief.
We're trying...
But I guess my, that wasn't my question, though. My question was, you disagree with that characterization that's in the resolution? That it would be extraordinary hardship, I guess? I mean, isn't that, you're proposing a commercial use now, so, I mean, isn't that refuting the previous findings of the zoning board based upon the, the evidence at that time?
I, I don't, I don't believe that, that proposing a commercial use on this property, you know, frankly, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with the language of the, of the word hardship as, as used in, in that context.
Extraordinary hardship.
And I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not, not an attorney, of course.
You're lucky.
I'm just having a hard, hard time characterizing or frankly, being asked to describe what was in the board's head when they, when they made that assessment.
Let me, let me make it more personal to you. Do you think there is an extraordinary hardship for this piece of property, to develop it with commercial development? I mean, obviously not. You are proposing commercial development, right? So, you disagree that the, the size and shape of the property, the lack of water, and the lack of frontage presents or creates an extraordinary hardship in developing it for its permitted use?
I believe that this property is particularly well-suited for this application as we, as we have proposed it. The, our, 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 the level of development that we're proposing is consistent with all ordinance requirements in terms of meeting needs for parking, meeting needs for impervious coverage, providing the required storm drainage facilities, providing the required sewage disposal facilities, and providing adequate water supply to service the building. So, I believe that this property, you know, and has, has direct access to, you know, to, to two roads of this property, in my, in my opinion, is well-suited for this application.
So, if it's particularly suited, there's no substantial hardship? I mean, is that a fair thing to say?
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause previously, the applicant was saying that it wasn't particularly suited, that it was particularly suited for something other than this. So, I mean, that's all I wanna inquire about on, on that level. Second is, the size of the property that was created by the subdivision, which the prior applicant and owner had asked for, right?
Correct.
So, it's self-created. Is that fair to say?
It was created by the previous, previous applicant.
Okay. Well, under the law, that's self-created. You know, what a previous applicant does carries forward.
Okay. Then so be it.
If the property had, and when they created the subdivision, they just didn't create a subdivision in and of itself. They created a subdivision for the specific purpose of having the existing home on it, right?
Yes.
So, it wasn't granted with the thought that there was gonna be anything other than a commercial development there? And I think actually, it said that if there was something other than a permitted, you know, other than a, a house there, additional relief might be necessary. So, what I'm getting at with all this is, the prior applicant created the size of the lot. The size of the lot was specifically granted for a house. That size of the lot was not granted for a commercial development. So, I think that it's fair when the board is, and I, and I think Mr. Cohen was correct in asking for the variance for the size of the lot based upon those facts. And, you know, he put it in the notice so everyone, so everyone would know about it. But I think that taking that lot, which was created specifically for the house and not for this use, and then trying to say, because it's under an acre, you don't have to do, you know, the buffer requirement that you would've had to do if there were no subdivision, I think the board can take that into account in the negative criteria that had the applicant not created this lot, which was created for a different purpose, you would've had a bigger buffer requirement. I mean, isn't that true?
If, if the property exceeded one acre, I, I think the, the larger buffer requirement would apply.
If, if the property were not subdivided, you would've had over an acre, right?
If the property were not subdivided, of, of course, but my, my, my opinion, my opinion is, is that, you know, the, the ordinance as written today is very specific as to the buffer requirements based upon the size of the property.
Well, but what I'm saying is, you need a lot-size variance. And when you're considering the lot-size variance, I think for the board, it's fair to take into account that they created the lot size, and that lot size, they're seeking to, you know, use a lesser buffer standard, and that lot was only created for the residential use. So, I think when you're looking at granting or denying the lot size, the undersized lot, you can take into account that the undersized lot creates a different buffer standard than would have normally been applicable. So, that's all I'm saying. I say, if you can take into, take it into account in the negative criteria for the, for the lot-size variance. You know, I offer obviously no, you know, opinion one way or the other on whether they've satisfied the proofs or not, but I think it's something you can evaluate.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mm-hmm. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Should we guys like to continue?
Well, you're, you're dumb...
I have a question.
Well, Mr. Cohen, are you, are you finished before we open it up for cross-examination?
Yes, we can do it.
Okay. Or, I mean, do you guys have anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Gazereski?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Actually, many of the questions which Mr. Cutinero asked, I intended to ask, so I'm not gonna go back over that ground all over again, but I do have several questions for Mr. McFarland. Mr. McFarland, in addition to presenting testimony as an engineer, you, of course, have also given testimony as a planner, haven't you not?
I have.
And you are a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And you're also a licensed planner?
I am.
When did you become a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey?
I became a licensed planner, I think, in two thousand twelve?
Twelve?
I believe, some, somewhere around there? Give or, give or take?
Five or six years ago, give or take a year?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Now, with regard to your educational background, what did you get your undergraduate degree in?
I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineer from Rutgers College of Engineering.
You have undergraduate degrees?
I do not.
Okay. Now, there are also undergraduate degrees offered in the field of planning, are there not?
There are.
You, you did not get an undergraduate degree?
I, I did not. I did not.
Have you ever been employed by a municipality as a planner?
No.
Okay. Other than giving planning testimony with regard to site plans that you prepare, do you oftentimes also testify as an independent planner?
I'm not sure I understand that question.
Okay. In this particular case, you drew the plans, do you not?
Correct.
And you're also now giving testimony as to the efficacy of the planning design of the plan you drew?
I have provided planning testimony applicable to the project, yes.
Kind of like an author of a book writing a book review of his old book, is it not?
I, I don't know what that question means.
Okay. Now, in listening to your testimony, I know that on at least a half a dozen occasions, I think, and I'll stand corrected if it's less, you were making the argument that these things that you were doing as far as buffering and the like are for the purpose of lessening the impact on the adjacent property owner.
That's correct.
Now, if, in fact, as Mr. Cutinero pointed out, the prior owner had retained the size of eighty-thousand square feet, that would've automatically lessened the impact for the development of this property rather than you're having to get a great lens to try to lessen the impact.
No. If, if the property had an area, in my opinion, if, if the lot of the subject application exceeds one acre, the Howell ordinance requires a fifty-foot buffer. If the lot of, of the subject application has an area less than one acre, Howell ordinance requires a ten-foot buffer.
But this particular piece of property, as was pointed out by Mr. Cutinero, only has less than one acre because the prior owner, while originally having approximately eighty-thousand square feet, chose to go in for a subdivision to reduce it to a size less than one acre.
The, the prior application subdivided the property into, into two lots of this lot, thirty-four oh one and thirty-four point oh two, the sizes as indicated on that filed map.
Here's what I have trouble following. If you have an eighty-thousand-square-foot lot, you have to have a fifty-foot buffer, correct?
Agreed.
And as I listen to Ms. Newman, in addition to that buffer, there's also setback, additional setback requirements?
Well, there are setback requirements associated with the zone.
Okay. But you're now looking to get the benefit of a reduced buffer because you chose eighteen or nineteen years ago to reduce the size of the lot.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's a, a true, a true assessment when, when, you know, at the time when my client got involved with this application or when we became involved in, in the application and provided our, our review of the ordinance and, and prepared plans, frankly, we, we view this as, as a lot that is, you know, less than one acre. We went to the ordinance standards that applied to lots of that particular size and prepared a plan that we felt was in accordance with ordinance, with the intent of the ordinance and with requirements of the ordinance, presented that plan to the board. We certainly had, had some discussions on, on that matter, one of the most prominent being the need, the needs for buffering. We evaluated those comments. We came back with a revised plan. Again, we've had some discussion on, on that tonight. And of course, the Howell ordinances are, are very specific and very demanding in, in their buffering requirements. I do a lot, a lot of work in a lot of other different municipalities, and frankly, none of them are as strict as Howell is in regards to, to the needs for buffering. But, but that's a good thing that it provides protection to the adjoining property owner as well as provides a buffering to the benefit of, of our application. So, we're here with an application tonight with a thirty-foot buffer, which, in my opinion, is, is significant and, and adequate to provide screening between these, between these two uses. I believe it meets the intent of the ordinance. We can certainly order semantics, we can argue semantics all night long, and we're probably gonna agree to disagree. But at, at the end of it, as the board is aware, any variance request comes down, comes down to impact. Our, our opinion is that, is that, you know, the, the relief associated with, with this particular application is, is totally, is essentially totally, totally insignificant. is essentially totally insignificant. The use as proposed is consistent with your ordinance requirements. The level of intensity, the nature of the development is consistent in every regard to your ordinance requirements. I believe it's a better planning alternative. It's in accordance with the master plan and in accordance with requirements of municipal land use law to demolish the existing house and construct a new office building in accordance with your ordinance standards. The principal use again, you know, the first principal use identified in your ordinance in this HD1 zone is professional offices, or offices, not professional offices. You know, that really is the context of our application.
I think it just needs to be clear for the board that the previous subdivision didn't take an 80,000-square-foot lot that was zoned to HD1. The only portion of this lot that was ever zoned to HD1 is what's zoned to HD1 today. It was a split-zone lot, and it was subdivided along the zone line. It was always 43,200 square feet of HD1 zone. That has not been changed by your planning board, your master plan, or anything in 18 years. This needs to be on the record for me to be clear that you understand that. Because it wasn't an 80,000-square-foot commercial lot, ever. It has a non-conforming use on it, a pre-existing non-conforming use that is proposed to be removed for a permitted use that has been in your zone ordinance since created. Offices have been permitted in this zone.
Mr. McCrault, I don't want to get into semantics with you, but my questions were predicated upon the comments being made by the board engineer as well as the board attorney. Now, when you accepted the job of preparing the engineering and testifying as a planner, prior to preparing your plan, were you aware of the fact that there was a subdivision granted for this property back in 1999?
I was aware that the property was subdivided at some point in the past, frankly, just by looking at the designation of the lot numbers, 3401, 3402. I did not have any details of the previous approval.
Now, you testified as a planner as well as an engineer, correct?
I did.
Well, didn't you feel it incumbent upon you to determine when in fact that property was subdivided and secure a copy of the resolution?
No, I did not think it was a critical item at that point. I felt that we certainly had adequate information to prepare the plans for the application, and we did so.
Would you agree that the existing resolution, which was passed in 1999, and the language which was utilized in that resolution would have an impact upon the board's consideration of the plan before it this evening?
The board certainly has a right to evaluate prior approvals in connection with the application.
Would you make any attempt to secure copies of either the minutes or the transcripts of the prior hearings back in 1998, 1999?
I did not.
You did not?
I did not.
On how many occasions have you testified as a planner, other than as a planner reviewing one of your own plans?
I don't think I ever have. I've always testified in regards to work that's been prepared by my office since I've held my license.
Mr. Gazereski, if I could for a second, before you continue with your cross-examination, I'd just like to know, has the applicant completed their testimony?
They said they did.
You did? I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm sorry.
You can continue.
Okay, thank you. I really only have a couple more questions.
Go ahead.
I probably forgot the one I was going to ask when you... When you get older, that happens, you lose your train of thought. But I'm almost through. Now, you testified that this property is in the HD1 zone, correct?
Correct.
And the HD1 zone stands for, the initials stand for, highway development.
Correct.
And wasn't your earlier testimony in this matter to the effect that you were entitled to certain waivers or variances with regard to signage because in fact the roadways in question were not highways?
I stated that, in my opinion, Clayton Road, Kent Road, as related to that ordinance are not defined as highways.
Funny?
As related to that ordinance standard, Clayton Road and Kent Road, in my opinion, are not, you know, would not be defined as a highway. I believe that section of the ordinance, when it talks about highway, is referring to Route 9.
And if in fact this issue was touched upon in the earlier resolution or in the earlier transcripts, you were not aware of that?
Correct.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
If the applicant has concluded his case, I've concluded my cross-examination. I do not have any examination for Mr. Wilhelm. I don't know whether he's present here this evening or not. Is he present, Mr. Cohen?
No, he's not, and he's not testified previously.
You did not, I thought you said he was not. Okay. I'd like to then proceed with my case.
Well, we have other members of the public who may want to cross-examine the witness. So I would recommend opening it up to other members of the public if they wish to ask questions.
Okay. So at this time, we'll open up this meeting for the rest of the public. Does anybody have any questions they'd like to come up and...
Okay.
Seeing none, we'll close the public portion.
So, Mr. Gazereski, you have your witnesses?
No, I have not. I have one witness.
Okay. You have any objections, Mr. Cohen?
Not yet.
All right. So who is it?
Andrew Thomas, who is a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Is it okay if Mr. Thomas sits here rather than standing?
Absolutely.
Hey, can you swear your name, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and swear your name for the record.
Andrew Thomas, THO, MAS.
Okay, if you can just qualify, Mr. Thomas?
Yeah. Mr. Thomas, first, is it possible I have that exhibit also put up on there? How is that done?
Not unless it was submitted. Not unless you have it on a desk.
Yeah, we're not that technologically advanced here yet. We're pretty proud of this setup, to tell you the truth.
I had to flip phones, so. Mr. Thomas, you were retained by me to present testimony this evening on behalf of the adjacent property owner, Mr. Strebbins, were you not?
Yes, that's right.
And you're being compensated for that?
Yes.
Okay. Would you just give the board briefly a short resume of your background and how you would qualify to give professional testimony as a planning expert?
Sure. Andrew Thomas, employed with the firm of Thomas Planning Associates. It's a professional planning firm. I have a master's degree in planning. I have more than 20 years' experience. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I was licensed in 1994. I'm also a full member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is the AICP, and I take continuing education credits to maintain that certification. I've testified before more than 60 planning and zoning boards within the state of New Jersey on behalf of applicants as an expert planner. And as part of my duties as a planner, I prepare land use and planning studies, master plans, zoning ordinances, various types of mapping programs, GIS mapping programs. I'm the borough planner for the Borough of Farmingdale, and our firm is consulting planners for six other communities in Monmouth County.
Mr. Cohen, do you have any... What are your questions?
I just can't believe he's been doing this for 20 years. He looks very young to me.
Wow.
Other than that, I have no objection.
Take that, then maybe the kindest comments you'll hear from Mr. Cohen tonight. All right. So, Mr. Chair, do you accept?
I'll accept, as per your...
But the reverse of that is that Mr. Cohen and I have done so little in all of the years.
That's good.
Okay. So you have... Excuse me. You have an exhibit you want to introduce?
Before we do that, was the resolution introduced after the last hearing? Was that produced?
The zoning board?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think both of them, because there was an extension of time as well.
Okay.
Let me just take a look.
That's why, that's marked as an exhibit.
Actually, it looks like it's not marked. We'll mark this. So the original resolution will mark as A17, and then the resolution that granted an extension of the minor subdivision, which was February 15, 2000, will mark as A18.
Mr. Thomas, prior to coming here this evening, did you prepare some exhibits for the board to consider?
Yes.
Was one of them an aerial photograph of the subject property?
Yes, it was.
Did that aerial photograph also reflect other uses on the property surrounding the subject property?
Yes, it did.
All right, so let's just stop there. We'll mark this as O1, which is an aerial of the subject property.
Yes.
Do you know what the date the photo was taken?
So...
Not downloaded, but when was it taken?
So this is an aerial photograph that was taken in 2015 by the NJDEP. Typically, they take aerial photographs in the spring because the leaves are not on the trees.
Okay. Mr. Cohen, do you have any objection to the authenticity of this exhibit?
Was there a date ever given?
I'm sorry.
Was there ever a date given?
He said it was from 2015, taken by the DEP.
No objection.
Okay.
Mr. Thomas, did you prepare any copies of that exhibit?
No, I don't have a copy of that exhibit, just the large copy of it.
Okay. Why don't you identify first where the subject property is located?
So the subject property is located in the center of the map. It's highlighted and shown as the proposed site. It's highlighted in a large yellow ring, Lot 34.01. You can see on the right-hand side of the map, you can see Route 9. And this map is oriented where north is toward the top of the map and south is to the bottom. So we have Route 9 on the right-hand side of the map. You can see Kent Road coming off of Route 9 in a sort of a diagonal direction. And then at the intersection of where the property is, you can see Kent Road and then Clayton Road going over to the left-hand side of the map or going west. I've highlighted some of the existing uses.
Before you do that, would you show to the board where Mr. Strebbins' property is located?
Yeah, Mr. Strebbins' property is located right next door, just to the left of the property.
Was that outlined in color?
It's not outlined in a color. It's Lot 34.02.
So Mr. Strebbins' lot, which is Lot 31.02, on the subject property, made up the original 80,000 square feet?
That's right. The subject property was Lot 34 at the time, before the subdivision. And when they subdivided, you have 34.01, which is the proposed site, and then Lot 34.02 was vacant at that particular time. And then in 2001, the house was constructed on that lot.
Okay.
And then just some of the uses I have have shown is the Wawa on the top of the map. Next door to the property and to the north is the Howell Township First Aid. Across the street on Kent Road is Pizza Hut, and then the Kent Plaza as well.
What side of Kent Road is the subject property, on the westerly side?
It's on the westerly side, that's right.
Looking at the subject property and proceeding in a westerly direction toward Mr. Strebbins' house, would you describe the uses which are on the following, let's say, five or six lots?
So from the subject, including the subject property and going west along Clayton Road, that's all residential, single-family residential homes. And right across the street from the proposed site, on the other side of Clayton Road, and also going back, are also single-family residential homes. And in fact, when you go down Kent Road to the south, those are all single-family residential homes as well, until you get to the church, which is at the next intersection. So everything to the, on the west-hand side of Kent Road is all residential, and then everything to the east on Route 9, which is zoned HD1, is commercial. And I have the zoning lines here that are highlighted in an orange color. And you can see the HD1 zone is basically around along the Route 9 corridor. It includes the proposed site to the west. Along Clayton Road is the R3 zone, and then right across the street is the ARE2 zone.
Okay.
So that's basically it for...
Now, would you just briefly describe to the board the nature of Mr. Strebbins' house as far as the approximate size and appearance?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Strebbins' house, could you describe to the board, do you have a photograph of Mr. Strebbins' house?
I do, yes. It's a...
We'll mark this as O2.
Can I show it to Mr. Cohen, please?
Yes.
And when was that photo taken?
I represented the board that it was taken within the last three months.
By who?
By Mr. Strebbins.
Mr. Cohen, you have any objections?
No.
Okay. Proceed.
So it's a two-story house. It has a...
Give me one second. Mr. Cuccinero, before we proceed, I apologize for it, but I do have one small copy of the area map, so it's Mr. Strebbins' case.
Okay.
But...
Do you have a copy of the photo as well?
Now, does the Strebbins' home also contain a swimming pool located on the lot?
Yeah, let me go back to O1. Again, it was, it's a two-story house. It was built in 2000, around 2001, I believe. And in the back, you can see that there's a swimming pool, a deck, a couple of small sheds in the back, a driveway leading to Clayton Road. And you can see that the house is actually situated close to the proposed site.
Okay. Now, are you familiar with the prior subdivision, Mr. Strebbins?
Yep.
Are you also familiar with the resolution of approval that was memorialized by the board in February of 1999, and it's identified as Resolution 99, Case Number 98, D10?
Yes.
Mr. Cuccinero went through several comments with regard to that resolution. With regard to this application, what of significance did you find in that resolution?
Again, so the subject lot was the subject of a prior, this prior resolution. It was a use variance, it was a subdivision back in February 1999. What's that?
Do you have copies of the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Could we distribute those copies of the resolution?
Yes. Actually, I have not only the resolution, but also the transcripts that went along with that resolution.
Transcripts or minutes?
The transcripts.
Oh, yes, because that was the Luella Taylor years where her minutes actually looked like a transcript.
They do look like transcripts. I really think they're minutes.
Luella Taylor did them like a transcript.
And when I read them initially, it was my impression they were minutes.
Well, let me see. I mean, if it's a transcript, someone's been certified to it.
Right.
And there should be a caption on it. I'm betting that it's a very comprehensive Luella Taylor said a minute.
They're not transcripts, Paul.
They really look like transcripts.
Oh, I know. I've seen her work, that's why I asked. Can I see it?
Yes.
Do you have the resolution?
Yep.
Do you have more copies?
I have copies for everybody, yeah.
Do you have the whole package? Do you have copies, Mr. Strebbins?
No, I haven't.
Okay, you all set?
Yep.
I'll take one of the transcripts. Sorry? You can take one of the transcripts.
What's the date of these minutes? Looks like December 8, 1998.
December 8, 1998, and then January 5, 1999. So the hearing, you know, continued, you know, over those two months.
These are not transcripts.
They're not transcripts.
They're minutes.
Well, that was just Page 41.
Thanks.
Well, that was just Page 41.
Did you provide, Mr. Cohen?
I did.
Mr. Cohen, do you have any objection?
No.
Okay, now, Mr. Thomas, I agree with Mr. Puchinero that these appear to be minutes rather than transcripts, although it would appear as if whoever prepared these minutes probably listened very closely to the audio, whatever it was, to prepare them. But in preparing your testimony this evening, did you review the prior resolution of approval that was granted in 1999?
I did.
And did you also review, albeit whether they're transcripts or minutes, those documents that referred to the meetings that were conducted back in 1999?
Yes.
Like December of 1998, and then in January of 1999?
That's correct.
What did you find to be significant in the resolution of approval as well as in the minutes as it relates to the relief being sought by the applicant in this matter? First, give us kind of like a generic overview of what the application before the zoning board back in 1999 gave us all about.
So, the applicant at that time of the subdivision had to seek a use variance in order to permit the creation of the new lot containing the residential structure. Because the lot, you know, being downsized in the HD1 zone, it was an intensification of a previously non-conforming use.
And that lot, and that structure, is the lot we're talking about in this application?
That's right. That's the, the existing residential use on the corner. Correct. And the intent of the, the prior application was then to subdivide Lot 34 into those two properties, and then really into two residential lots, because commercial use wasn't particularly suitable due to the split zoning. And that's according to the board planner at that time and also other members of the zoning board. And there was a number of comments as you go through these, these minutes from the board planner, the chairman, several members of the board regarding the benefits of subdividing the original lot into two residential lots. And I just wanted to go through some of the comments that they, that they had at that time, just to give you a flavor of what they were thinking when they did make that subdivision and they did have that use variance. So, in 1998, Page 15, Board Planner Hire, which was Fred Hire of Hire &amp; Gruel, he said, "With respect to the general use of the property, I think there's a good cause to be made for the residential use of the property, given the location of the existing structure and given the residential character of the properties to the west." And as I had described on the map, all the properties to the west of the site, including the ones, the properties that they subdivided, are all residential. The next one, Page 18, again, for the, for planner, he goes, "That's why I think that the residential use of the property is proper, given that the fact that only 12,000 to 15,000 square feet is in the commercial zone. I think that, that zoning is unduly harsh as it applies to the property as it can't possibly meet the zoning standards." He said, "Commercial needs 80,000 square feet. And because of its configuration, the septic, the setback requirements, the buffer requirements, the property can't be used as zoned for commercial purposes." So, he, he says, "I think that there's a real solid case for residential use of the property." And he said, again, "It's a, it's a matter of the intensity of the property." Now, looking at 1999, the, the application continued in January of 1999. Mr. Hire said on Page 36, "Now you have a two-lot scenario, one which contains the existing structure but which exceeds 40,000 square feet, both of which are consistent with the established pattern of the residential lots in the neighborhood." And then he goes on and continues. He goes, "The minimum commercial zone is 80,000 square feet, and there would be less than optimal utilization of the property that was developed commercially, and it might be even more intrusive in the neighborhood." Now, one of the board members said on Page 37, he's Mr. Gilmet, "We are allowing a subdivision here, and actually, this is no longer allowing this to be a commercial property as it would be under 80,000 square feet." And I think that's a compelling statement by the board member. The board now, you know, is understanding at that time that the property would be subdivided and would not be used in the future, from what they thought, to be a commercial property because, because of the minimum lot size was not met and a number of other factors.
Mr. Thomas, I just have a question, because actually, it wasn't clear in the resolution. And when I started reading it on that issue, I just want to ask you and Mr. Cohen as well. So, they created two 40,000-square-foot lots at that time. But when I read the minutes, they were, when they talk about conforming lots, they said they were making them conforming to the R3 zone.
Yes.
So, the lot that's in the HD1 zone was undersized for its permitted use. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yeah, and the lot...
What was the, what was the required lot size in the HD1 zone at that time?
Eighty thousand square feet from what I read.
Mr. Cohen, do you have any idea about that?
I really don't know. I don't doubt that that's possible. It was either 80 or 40, but...
Okay.
When you look through the, the minutes that they, they refer to the 80,000-square-foot lot size...
Well, I'm reading from the applicant's attorney where it says that we're, what we are doing is we are taking the existing property and we are creating two new buildable lots that area-wise, which is what I'm interested in, frontage-wise, depth-wise, conform with the requirements of the zoning for the R3 zone. So, the one lot, it sounds like...
Yeah, I think that...
The requirements for the R3 zone are, they're not anywhere near 40,000 or 50,000.
But if you read, I think, the initial application before the board was not for two lots, it was for three lots. In the original application before the board, Brian Kennedy, who is now deceased, they were creating one lot, which the subject property...
This says two new building lots. So, are you saying that there's a remainder lot for three?
What?
Are you saying that there was a remainder lot at that point for three?
And the original...
But my, my question is that they're saying, when they say they conform, they're saying they're conforming to the R3 zone. Mr. Cohen, you had a statement on that?
From my reading of, briefly reading the transcripts and reading the resolution previous, it seems they were more concerned with qualifying for septic.
Well, I'm not, that wasn't my question. My question was, when they make a statement that the lot size conforms, they were saying we're using the R3 standards, not the HD1 standards.
Right.
So, you know, from the get-go, it sounds like the, your lot, the subject lot here, they were trying to make it conform to the R3 zone because it was residential. It did not conform to the lot area requirements of the zone that it was in, the HD.
Right.
Does that, does that sound fair, Mr. Cohen?
I mean, without knowing the exact zone requirements of 1999, I really can't tell you the answer, but it sounds logical.
No, that probably wasn't the case. But...
They make a comment, you know, I think one other thing that factored in back in 1999 was the question of utilization of a septic system.
No, I, I understand all that, but I was just trying to understand. I was trying to reconcile the resolution, because when I read the resolution, it makes you think that the two 40,000-square-foot lots were conforming to the zone requirements. When you read the minutes, they're talking about the R3 zone. They're not talking about it being compliant with the HD1 requirements, which I think may be important. But, go on.
Oh, it was not compliant with the HD.
Right. That's what I'm getting at.
You're absolutely right.
Okay.
Right.
All right. I'm sorry to have interrupted you. I just was trying to figure that out.
So, just a few more comments in 1999, from Page 37, from Board Planner. He said, "If you look at the township-wide map, the zoning lines were drawn with a fairly wide brush, and this, these two lots got bisected out. The property was never a commercial lot." He went on to say, "From a traffic perspective, it's not a good place to introduce a high-profile driveway as well." He goes, "You're right at the bend there." And when he's referring to the bend, there is just a slight bend at the intersection of Clayton and Tent. Kind of an odd angle that it comes out to. It's just a slight bend to the south. Board Member Johnson on Page 41 said, "The two-lot subdivision is the best use of the land on the master plan." He said that the lot was never ideal for a commercial use in the highway development zone due to insufficient lot frontage, and there was no water or sewer available on the lot, and he's moved for approval of that subdivision. And then finally, Board Member Myers said, "I concur with Mr. Johnson. I feel that the two-lot subdivision would be beneficial for the zone. It brings it within the realm of the lots that are there, both in size and shape. As far as that portion that is in the commercial zone, there's really nothing that could be done with it commercially anyway, and I feel that it should be moved." And he said, voted for it in a positive.
Mr. Thomas, when Mr. McCrawlin spoke, he testified by that he could not put himself in the mind of the members of the board who were hearing the application. But these minutes certainly seem to reflect what they were thinking about, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Objection. That's asking for him to do what they're checking. They can't do that.
Oh, yeah. I'm asking what...
They say what they say.
That's fine.
They say what they say.
Objection.
But also, what, what, I mean, Mr. Thomas is not qualified as an expert to divine the thoughts of previous zoning board members. He's here to provide his own analysis of the positive and negative criteria in the application.
Mr. Thomas, would you, would you agree with the comments being made by the board members back in that application being conducted in like, you know, 1998, 1999?
I do. I, I think, looking at the comments, the variance in the subdivision was granted for the residential lot because, as they said, it was consistent with the neighborhood and the established pattern of the existing residential lots. And as the resolution states, they said it's the best use of the property, and it's not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the master plan. So...
But, Mr. Thomas, but also, I mean, isn't there statements in there that the governing body disagreed? That there was actually a request for rezoning, and the governing body evaluated it and disagreed with those, with those very comments?
What are you referring to?
In the resolution, Mr. Hire states that, I forget which page it's on, that some, you know, context is, is appropriate. And he talks about the planning board having made a recommendation for rezoning, and the governing body rejected it after a lot of neighbors showed up and, and found, because the rezoning was proposed to go to all HD, that the neighbors disagreed with HD for that entire area and asked that the, the existing residential zoning remain. So, the ultimate arbiter of what was appropriate, the, you know, the governing body who drafts the ordinance, you know, they, they took a different view.
Right. But, but they were talking about the entire lot, though.
But, I guess, and not to cut you off, but I think this may be an appropriate juncture to talk about it. For this board, I mean, what's, what's the, what's our role to talk about a permitted use coming in and not being appropriate for a lot, on a, on a lot that it's, it's zoned for?
Well, I, I'm getting to that.
Okay.
Another size lot.
I have a question, Rob.
What?
Just procedural. Can we ask questions as we're going to keep the... They already have to wait till the end of the testimony?
Our typical policy is that certainly the board members and as professionals can, but the, you know, the applicant would wait for the conclusion. Some of your questions may be answered, you know, by his other testimony. But, you know, it's the board chair's discretion.
Want to proceed forward, Mr. Thomas?
Yes. So, the property, the subject property does not have the size for a conforming commercial property in the HD1 zone. It requires 80,000 square feet. The shape of the property and the way it's oriented, it's oriented more towards the residential neighborhood rather than to Kent Road and also the commercial uses on Route 9. The subject property has a lack of the required frontage on Kent Road, which is where the location of the driveway, in my opinion, would be more appropriate. The driveway now is located on Clayton Road, which is oriented right across the street from residential use. Now, the, the purpose of the HD1 zone, if you look in the zoning ordinance, it says, "Is to provide for highway-oriented development in the Route 9 corridor on larger lots than permitted in the HD zone." This lot doesn't meet the purposes of the HD1 zone. It's because it's, first of all, it doesn't meet the, it doesn't meet the lot size, minimum lot size of 80,000 square feet. And also, it's not oriented toward the highway. The building is actually oriented towards the residential area on Clayton Road.
Is there a section of the ordinance that specifically requires that orientation?
It doesn't, no. I'm, what I'm reading is that the, the purpose of the HD1 zone, that's, that's what it states.
But generally, there's case law that says that the purpose section of an ordinance is not to be used to determine what the requirements are. It's the actual codified requirements.
No, I, I...
I think it's the South Brunswick case.
I, I agree with that. I'm just, I'm just stating what the purpose is compared to what, what's being provided here. Now, looking at the buffer, if the, if this, and this is the buffer requirement for, in Section 188-Dash-63, if the subject lot were conforming, or if it was even an acre, then there would be the 50-foot buffer requirement that would be applicable. The area of the subject property after the subdivision was approved by the zoning board adjustment is 43,194 square feet. Now, an acre is 43,560 square feet. So, the lot is just less than an acre. And it's just less than, than an acre by 366 square feet.
Just some context on that. Howe used to define an acre differently. Howe used to define an acre as 40,000, which they used to call the builder's acre. And Councilwoman Smith, who always had a problem with that, led the effort to modify the ordinance so that an acre was actually a true acre. So, when they talk about acres, acres meant something different then than it does now under our ordinances.
So, it's just less than an acre by 366 square feet. And just to give you an example of what, what, what that is, it's a, it's an area of approximately 18 feet by 20 feet. And another way to look at it would be if the lot line between Mr. Strevin's property had been subdivided, when it was subdivided, and it was to the left two feet, it would be an acre. That's how close it is. So, the 50-foot buffer is not only from the property line of the residential use, but it's also, but it also goes down the residential zoning district line. So, the zoning district line, you can see, goes down, right down the center of Clayton Road. So, not only do you have, have to have a 50-foot buffer from Lot 34.02, but you also have to have a 50-foot buffer measuring from the middle of Clayton Road into the subject property. And if it was measured to the subject property, it would be impacting really the whole front row of parking that's being proposed. And of course, the buffer requirement is there to protect the residential uses from commercial uses. The buffer being provided, as you've heard from testimony, is 30 feet from the residential use, and there's only a 10-foot buffer from Clayton Road into the property. Now, I looked at a particular case. It's called the Chickaleese versus Monroe Township case. In this case, there was a subdivision of the property, the previous owner. And under relevant court cases in New Jersey, where a predecessor created a non-conforming use, knowing zoning restrictions, the successor of the property is not entitled to a variance based on hardship. And that's despite the passage of time or even the fact that he has no significant relationship with the original...
We're, I mean, we're familiar with the Chickaleese case. I believe it was Judge Wolfson's case. And, you know, from a legal position, that is my position, that, you know, and I don't think that's a planning issue, but it's, that is my position that what, you know, a prior owner has done...
Right.
Doesn't absolve the current owner. A self-created hardship, you know, passes...
You and Judge Wolfson are the same thing.
I was his law clerk.
So, I guess the, the only point there is that the C1 hardship can't be argued or proven here. The, so that leaves the C2 criteria, or that the application advances the purposes of a municipal land use law, which is a positive criteria. of a municipal land use law, which is a positive criteria, and the benefits outweigh the deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements. And of course, the, the negative criteria also applies as well. So, the applicant had testified, and I'll just kind of give you a summary of some of the points that he made as far as that criteria went. He said that the property allows for the building of a regular shape, it's being developed for a low-intensity use, it advances light air and open space, that the use would be a permitted use in the zone, that the impervious coverage is below what's permitted, and that they're providing parking in accordance with the zoning regulations. In my opinion, I don't think the applicant's testimony satisfies the positive or negative criteria for lot frontage and, and also the lot, lot frontage and the lot area variance requests. I, the question really is, is why does this particular lot, or particular sized lot, advance purposes of the zoning, and why is it a better alternative to, to have an office on a lot that's nearly half this required size and doesn't meet the required frontage from one of the streets? In my opinion, this does not advance at least two purposes of the municipal land use law. Purpose A, promoting public health, safety, and general welfare, and purpose C, providing adequate light and air and open space. And the reasons, I don't believe that meets those purposes are that, again, that the purpose of the HD one zone is to provide for highway-oriented development on Route Nine on larger lots than what's permitted in the HC zone. If you looked at the comments from previous board members, they said that the lot is simply too small for the zone. This lot is, lot size is forty-six percent of what is required. It doesn't have the required frontage on one of the, on the streets, so, again, the lot not only doesn't have the required frontage, but it's oriented toward the residential uses on Clayton Road. The building is oriented and is closer to Lot forty, Lot thirty-four point oh-two, to the west. The proposed commercial driveway to the site would be directly across from the residential use. The lot extends into an existing residential neighborhood, and the zoning board approved the creation of this lot as a residential lot and not as a commercial lot, and I think, looking at the history of, of what occurred in the prior subdivision and the use variance, should be taken into consideration by the board when evaluating the negative criteria for this lot. The board made, the previous board made numerous comments that I highlighted. This is technically not a one-acre lot, it falls just short, as I testified. If it was an acre, then the fifty-foot buffer would apply. And as far as the negative criteria is concerned, in my opinion, it would be detrimental to the surrounding properties, particularly the two closest residential properties.
Why?
There's a question that he posed.
Oh, oh.
Would you be more, just articulated a little more?
Well, I mean, saying it's detrimental is like a conclusory statement, but what is...
Yeah, I was just kind of going through the, my summary, the conclusion statement.
Why don't you respond to the question?
I, I think it's detrimental because, first, obviously, it's, it's an undersized lot, it's, it's forty-six percent of what it should be. And as I stated a number of times, you have to look at the, and consider the residential use, uses around of the site, particularly to the west, along Clayton Road, and to the south. The building is located to the west of the property. The access is not on Kent Road, the access is on Clayton Road, which is right across the street from a residential house. The, you have to look at the, what the previous board did as far as the subdivision is concerned and the use variance that was granted. So, in my opinion, I think it would be detrimental to, to the residential uses.
Why does it, I mean, I guess what my question goes to is, why does it have to be sympathetic to the residential uses if it's not in the residential zone?
Well, I mean, I, I think the biggest part is that it has to be an eighty thousand square foot lot to be considered, really, but, I mean, that, that was the, the regulations are designed for an eighty thousand square foot lot. Even though this is, this is an HD one zone, and it does permit an office, I don't disagree with that, but it requires an eighty thousand square foot lot.
Just, just so I can clarify, would you agree, though, that it meets all other bulk standards in the zone, including coverage?
Yes.
Would you note that the maximum impervious coverage in the zone is seventy percent, and they're at forty-five percent?
Yes.
Thanks.
Let me just ask one question, if I may. At the time that the subdivision took place, it would certainly appear that the requirements for the commercial zone, albeit the balance of the property wasn't in it, was eighty thousand square feet, correct?
As far as I read it, yeah, it was eighty thousand square feet, that's correct. I don't know beyond that what the actual requirements were.
And the applicant, in this particular instance, purposely chose to reduce the size of the property that located in the commercial zone to approximately a little over forty thousand square feet.
Yes, that's right.
And certainly, from the record, it's clearly shown that the use on the property at that time was residential.
It was residential, yep.
And the person who owned the entire parcel wanted it to continue as residential use.
That's, that's correct.
And, and the board members in their colloquy with Mr. Kennedy indicated in their, their position was that it was best suited for a residential use on that sized lot.
That, that's right. And the comments that I read, it seemed to me that the board had considered that this was the best use for the property to be a residential use.
Now, to your knowledge, has the applicant made any attempt to acquire additional property to satisfy the eighty thousand square feet?
I'm not sure.
Okay. You want to finish up, then?
Yep, so that, that was, I guess that was basically it, and just the final comment was that, well, so, just, just to give the board just a couple of lines on the, on the variance really required for the C-two zoning, it said it has to be, must be rooted in the purposes of zoning and planning itself, and must advance purposes of the municipal land use law. The grant of a C-two variance must benefit the community in that it represents a better zoning alternative for the property and may not be granted merely to advance the purposes of the owner. Thus, the focus of the C-two case is not whether the current zoning ordinance creates a hardship on the owner, warranting a relaxation of the standard, but on the characteristics of the land that present an opportunity for improved zoning and planning that would benefit the community. Considering that and considering what I testified to, I, I don't think that the board should grant the required or expected variances for this application, in my opinion.
Just briefly, all of the lots located to the west of this property are zoned and constructed as residential uses, correct?
Yes, they're, are, within the R-three zone, they're single-family residential.
The property immediately across the street, what is it, on Clayton Road, that is, in fact, a residential zone, and all residential houses constructed there, right?
Yes.
And the property immediately to the north, which really could be characterized as a, a beneficial use in that it's a first aid station?
That's correct. It's a, the Hal Township First Aid Station, and then just beyond that, Seminole Court was, was, is a fairly new subdivision, it's the last ten years, and those are all single-family residential homes as well.
Would you agree that the first aid station has relatively low traffic caps during the course of the day?
Yes.
Relatively little impact upon an adjacent residential use?
Typically, yes.
Okay. And the commercial development is on the opposite side of Clayton Road?
It's on the opposite side of, of Kent Road.
Kent Road, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that's, Kent Road is all HD one, those uses are oriented toward the Route Nine corridor as the purpose of the HD one zone states.
So, immediately across the street, we've got commercial uses, but also commercial zoning?
But also commercial zoning, and access to Route Nine as well.
None, none of which this property has?
No. When, when you turn on the Clayton Road, it feels though you're going down a residential road, really, that they're all residential uses, and so the proposed site was really extending into that, that residential area.
That was also the opinion of the board back, the zoning board back in nineteen ninety-nine.
That's right.
I could add one more question.
Do you also realize there is a radio station five lots down, correct?
Yes.
With high-profile antennas?
Yes, further down the street, that's right.
I'm sorry, I have to go. How, how far down the road is that from the subject section?
Five lots.
Five blocks?
Five lots. If you look down, five lots is, is the radio station.
Thomas, maybe you can go up to the exhibit and show us where those two properties are, yours and the, the radio station.
So, it's, basically, this, this lot right here, and they have the radio, three or four radio, four radio towers.
In what zone is that radio station?
It's in the R-three zone.
In the residential zone? Do you have any idea of one that radio station was approved and what the zoning was at the time it was approved?
No, I don't.
Mr. Cohen, if, if you don't mind, we could take a five-minute break? We've been up here for two hours, then you can ask your questions.
Want to take a two-hour break?
No.
Was Mr. Gazarovski finished?
I finished. Yes, I am. I just have a few questions.
Okay, let's just take a five-minute break.
Sure.
The board will now recess.
Bring the meeting back to order.
The zoning board, excuse me, the planning board will now reconvene. Sorry.
Too many meetings going on.
So, I think where we left it, Mr. Cohen, you had a couple of questions for Mr. Thomas?
Yes, yes, yes. Mr. Thomas, during your testimony, you relied a lot on the previous testimony of the board members and the planner and the transcript that we were provided, and that approval was in nineteen ninety-nine. Couple of questions. In nineteen ninety-nine, was the Walmart where it is today?
No, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm trying to think if it was or not at that point.
Thinking, no.
I, I'm not sure.
And what about the Kent Plaza? Was that there in nineteen ninety-nine?
I don't know. I don't know.
The third aid square?
I don't know.
Okay. I've been here a long time, and I, I don't think any of those uses were there.
I'd object to Mr. Cohen testifying. He wants to call his expert, have him testify, fine.
Okay.
I have a different question, just so that we can give, the board can give proper weight to Mr. Thomas's answers. What's the relevance of whether those particular uses were there at that time?
I think the area's changed. I think times have changed. I think it's, it's not the same area that it was in nineteen ninety-nine, it's just, I think that's a planning issue that they can take notice of, that things have changed. There's more commercial development there than there was before.
And what, and what roads?
Clayton, Kent Road, Kent Road. They all have access to Kent Road, those properties I mentioned.
Well, I, I think, I think Mr. Gazarovski is correct that your plan, Mr. McFarland, would probably have to provide some planning testimony as to how the board should, should weigh the evolution of the area over the years.
And he hasn't argued, it changed the circumstances.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You have any more questions?
Just a couple. Are office buildings permitted in the HC zone and out?
I object to the relevance of that question. The ordinance speaks for itself. He just testified as to the ACs.
Well, let's, let's hear, you know, the answer, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Cohen the same question as to how we should, you know, weigh that.
They're, they're permitted in the HD one zone, that's the zone that's in the area. I don't see that, I didn't, I didn't, I don't see any HC zone.
Do you know whether they're permitted in the HC zone?
And I don't know the answer without looking at the zoning board.
Mr. Cohen, how is whether they're permitted in the HC zone, which is neither residential or HD, how should the board consider that and weigh it?
Office buildings are permitted in that zone, the area requirement in that zone is forty thousand square feet?
Well, but what does that mean for, for this case? It's a completely different zone.
I understand that, but they, they can take notice of the fact that...
That we have other zones with different requirements?
Well, this client by...
I would, I would counsel the board to give that very little weight. It has, it doesn't impact either of the zones that are at play here.
Just last question regarding the master plan. Since nineteen ninety-nine, do you acknowledge how the township, do you think you change the zone of this property, or change any of the requirements for the zone?
I didn't look at that specifically, so I don't know.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Do you, do you want to supplement with Mr. McFarland on the issue of the evolution of the zone, or just you're satisfied with what's on the record?
Do you know?
I think so.
Yes, we'd, we'd like to add a little bit.
Well, I believe, where'd the microphone go? Do you guys have it?
Thank you.
Well, I believe the first, the first question that Mr. Cohen asked related, related to, you know, specifically how this area has changed since the matter of the subdivision was heard in, in nineteen ninety-nine, he asked a couple of specific questions about some buildings in the area and development with, within the, you know, within, within this subject area. I believe he asked a question about which site specifically did he ask? He asked about Kent Plaza, and Kent Plaza being this building here, and I don't believe that building was, existed in nineteen ninety-nine. I know that thi- this office building did not exist in nineteen ninety-nine, because my, my office had done the plans, the plans for that building. Also, also of note is that these two sites at the corner and, and this office building, we did, both those sites are in the HD one zone and are less than eighty thousand square feet.
What size are they?
I don't have the exact numbers, but I know they are, they are below...
Yeah, but they're larger, the same?
They are below eighty thousand square feet.
But are they greater than the, the square foot as you have?
This office plaza that we did, if my memory is correct, that is around thirty thousand square feet or so, but I, I'm guessing a little bit. The site at the corner, it looks like it's about, about the same size, so I'm going to give you a guess, but that's probably about a lot area of thirty thousand square feet. And certainly, the Walmart did, did not exist in nineteen ninety-nine, that's, that has not been there for, for nineteen years.
What's the buffer that they, that each one of those have?
I don't believe they have any buffers on, on these other properties.
Walmart doesn't have any buffers?
Oh, no, I thought you were asking about these two. Walmart, I, I can't tell you exactly what the buffer is. The Walmart site, of course, would meet, of course, meets your ordinance standards for, for significant buffers based upon its size, and, and of course, its intensity much different than, than what were proposed. Mr. Thomas also pointed out several times concerns about the driveway location. When we looked at this property, frankly, we had very early discussions with, with, with Laura about driveway location to get her opinion, but our, our opinion was, as a matter of public safety, that the correct location for the driveway is to be located on Clayton Road.
So, you know, just in terms of our review, or the, the planning board's review, how does any of that provide guidance on whether there should be a lot area variance or any other relief on this property?
I believe it rates, it relates to the particular suitability of the site. I believe that this site is particular...
But they don't, but particular suitability is a D-one standard, which is irrelevant here.
But I think, in, in my opinion, it, it applies to this application since, since the board in, in essence has tried to, is trying to evaluate this application really on, on, on a zoning level, and, and on a level that's, that's, shows conformity with the land use law and shows conformity with the master plan. We have, we have evaluated the, the previous master plans, and they did not recommend any changes to the zoning in this parcel over the, over the last two cycles. So, in each of those two cycles, master plan has been reevaluated, reevaluated by the municipality, and the zoning has, has remained in place. So, we did evaluate the...
Right, and can't you also take that argument to say that every time a decision like that was made, there was another decision not to lessen the buffer requirements? And that there's been a legislative intent, you know, not to change that requirement that you need relief from? I think you're actually backing yourself into a, a higher standard than, than the C-two. I think you're actually backing yourself into a, a higher standard than, than the C2. I mean.
Well, I'm just, frankly, I'm, I'm just trying to, to address, again, in, in my opinion, some of the matters that have been raised in connection with, with the application.
See, to me, when I read the case law, when I read the municipal land use law, the analysis of your positive and negative criteria is rather site-specific. Not rel, not relating to what's being done on other pieces of property. In fact, we have a whole line of case law that says, don't do that. If you look at what's being done on other pieces of property and that's what you base your decision on, you're, you're almost getting into usurping the governing body's legislative function.
I do, I, 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 I do agree that the test of suitability is, is appropriate for this application. And, and I've tried to put some, some testimony related to that particular matter. Uh, frankly, I, I think it's important for, for the board to consider in this context because we are talking about the impact of a variance, which, which is a lot size. We've prevented our testimony as to how we're trying to, um, try to mitigate any impacts associated with that particular variance. Primarily, those are by providing, by providing the buffer and by providing a, a development that's in accordance with every other standard in your ordinance, which relates to intensity of the development. Again, we're 70% impervious as proposed, we only have 40-some-odd percent proposed. Parking is, is required, we have the park requirement, so we're not asking for any other relief. Uh, that would be, that would be tied to, um, the dimension of the property or, or the area of the land that's available for, for development.
But that argument relies on the fact that you changed the rules by getting the subdivision. So that, you know, the result was, you know, getting yourself out of, and what may not have been the intent at that time, but the result that you're seeking to take advantage of is that you don't have as great a buffer requirement because you got a subdivision that was for specifically a residential use. Because your predecessor in title said that your proposed use was absolutely not particularly suited for the site. But I understand, I understand your argument.
And at, at the end of the day, the board certainly gets to, uh, gets to weigh the facts and make the decision whether they think the application.
Well, of course.
Is credible and, and meets, and meets the standards. Uh, again, our, our opinion is that when we take everything into context, look at both the big picture and the small picture, we're proposing an office building in a commercially zoned office. The municipality has had at least two opportunities to look at this project in terms of master plan reevaluations and has not recommended changes to, uh, to, to this, to this, um, particular property and has kept it within the, within the HD1 zone. If the municipality felt that way, they certainly could have rezoned this property to residential, to a residential zone. And, you know, we wouldn't have come in with this application the way it's been presented. Uh, we've tried to listen to input from the board and input from the adjoining property or increase that buffer. In, in my opinion, and we've satisfied the intent of the, of the ordinance. Uh, we, we've agreed to work with, with the professionals to even try to upgrade that buffer to, to another degree if, if they feel it's warranted. Uh, and, and in my opinion, this application does advance the purposes of zoning. We are providing a, a, a building, a, a use that is in accordance with those permitted in the zone. It's a better planning alternative than having a single-family house remain there, which is not in accordance with your ordinance, not in accordance with the zoning, not in accordance with the goals, objectives, recommendations of the master plan. And again, very important to, to understand that of two cycles of master plan evaluation, this property has not been recommended to be downgraded to a residential zone.
Well, just on, on one of those points, and then I'll, I'm, I'm done with asking questions. On the master plan, in order to get a use variance, doesn't the applicant have to satisfy the enhanced criteria, which is harmonizing the grant of the use variance with the master plan?
Yes, the applicant certainly has to satisfy, you know, special reasons and.
Um, no, I'm talking about the enhanced criteria, which talks specifically about reconciling, um, the proposed use with the master plan.
For a use variance application?
Yeah. Are you familiar with the enhanced criteria?
Well, certainly, but this is not a use variance application.
That's why I said you don't want to, well, you, but you make reference to what the master plan wants. And I'm just saying there was a previous argument by your predecessor in title that the master plan supports what you got the use variance for. So the, the arguments are, you know, I, I think you say that, you, you seem to say that the prior approvals have some relevance. And I'm just pointing out the fact that your predecessors in title took a different view of the, of the master plan.
That's, that's their opinion, but I, I'm, I've evaluated the master plan based upon the words that are in the master plan. And, uh, you know, the master plan, again, certainly defines a series of goals and objectives for the various elements of, of, of the plan. And, and again, most, most importantly for this particular property, um, the master plan, the adopted master plans have never recommended changes, any other changes to, uh, to this particular piece of property. They recommend it, you know, to, to remain as the HD1 zone. And that, that's, um, you know, the zoning that, uh, that dictates the use of this property today.
You have anything more, Mr. Gazarovski?
I, I have a couple of questions. Can you tell me how far from the subject property is the Walmart located?
I, I can't give you an exact answer, but it is probably maybe a quarter mile at the most.
Okay.
A couple thousand feet at the most.
And it's, and it's located on Route 9, is it not?
It is located on Route 9, but also backs to, also backs to Kent Road.
Well, having said that, but it is in a zone specifically, which is Zone HD1. And the primary ingress and egress into the Walmart is off of Route 9, is it not?
Yes, and it also has an access, uh, secondary access on the, on the other side street.
Primary access is on Route 9?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Now, with regard to the other uses which you cite are in the nearby area, the Wawa, the Pizza Hut, and the Kent Plaza, for all of them, the primary access is on Route 9?
Um, yes, it is. Yes, they are.
Right. Which means that for those uses, they are encouraging traffic, whether it be pass-by or destination traffic, to come off of Route 9, not off of Kent Road.
I can't comment to what they encourage. That seems, you know, kind of speculative to me.
Well, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That seems kind of speculative to me. All, all I know is that those properties do have access to both Route 9 and, and to Kent Road.
Well, I think you said that for one of those, uh, your firm actually did the site plan for it.
Uh, we did.
That would be for, what, the Pizza Hut?
No, that's the building just north of the Pizza Hut. The office building that sits here, as you see on our aerial, that particular plan, we, we did the site plan for that application.
Let me step up and see.
Sure. That's on Lot, uh, Lot 2. That's Lot 2?
Kent Plaza?
This one, this building here. This is Kent Plaza here. That's the office building we did, called Howell Office. It was just recently completed within the last year.
What is the primary ingress and egress for that building?
Well, that building has access to both Route 9 and Kent Road.
What's the primary ingress?
They both, they both serve the property.
Well, would you please describe, uh, Route 9? Is Route 9 an arterial road? Is it a local road or is it a collector road?
Route 9 is an arterial road.
Oh, so Kent Road is not an arterial road, is it?
It is not.
Well, how would you describe it?
Kent Road is certainly a lesser, a lesser level than, than Route 9 is.
Okay. So any commercial development going up in that area would utilize Route 9, not Kent Road?
Um, I, I can't, I can't answer that question. What about people who live in Jackson, uh, like I do, who may be coming down Clayton Road?
Mr. Chair.
Into that site?
Mr. Chairman, I'm still struggling to understand the relevance of Walmart to this application at all. Um, it doesn't seem, you know, I, I don't have any more questions we have about Walmart or any of these other buildings. But it doesn't seem to me that it bears on the variances that are being sought for this particular piece of property. Um, unless, you know, there, there's some proffer as to, you know, how, I mean, there's been a general proffer that we should consider the evolution of uses in this area. We don't know the sizes of any of these properties. We don't know the buffers at any of these properties. Even if we did, it doesn't speak to whether the positive and negative criteria has been satisfied on this particular piece of property. So, you know, in, in my legal view, I think we've indulged this line, you know, maybe longer than, than we should have. I mean, is, is there any more on the Walmart or any of these other buildings?
Let me just ask one last question. With regard to these other uses that you referred to, do you know whether any of them required a variance for being an undersized lot?
No, I don't know. I don't know that as a fa, as a fact.
Okay. Now, with regard to the, uh, first aid station, which is located, I guess, to the north, uh, that first aid station actually takes up two lots, does it not? It has frontage on both Seminole Court as well as on Kent Road.
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. Just lastly, uh, would you, would you agree with me that in reading the resolution back in 1999, as well as reading the transcripts, that the zoning board at that time was, for lack of a better term, induced to grant the use variance requested upon the representation by the applicant that the newly created lot located on Kent Road and Clayton Road would be utilized for a residence?
I, I can't offer any comment on that.
Do you know whether or not, or how that property's been utilized for the last 20 years since the time the resolution was approved back in 2018?
All, all I know is that there's a single-family house on the property right now.
Is it occupied?
Don't believe so.
I have a further question.
Okay, we need to open it to the public for any comments that they may have.
Okay, we'll open the meeting back up to the public. If anybody has any comments or questions, please come to the podium and speak clearly into the mic.
May I need to swear again first? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board's the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Can you please give us your name and spell it as well and your address?
My name is.
I think you have to press the button, I'm sorry.
On the, on the side, there's a little gray button at the base of it.
The base of the mic. No, use, use the handheld one. My name is Kathy Novak. I live at 16 Stratton Drive.
Kathy Novak, can you just say your last name?
N-O-V-A-K. I've lived in Hal for 33 years. I travel to this area every day, so I'm very familiar with it. And the statement that the, the house is unoccupied is false. I see people living in it and I see garbage cans and I see people every day. Because I go to Wawa, I buy gas. So I believe the people that are living in it are renting it, but I don't know. It's just a guess. But I just want to come forward and say that that was a false statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have anybody else in the public that would like to come up and speak? Seeing none, we'll close that public portion.
You have any closing statements, Mr. Gazarovski?
Uh, just, you know, lawyers always use the word, "I'll be brief," and I will attempt to be brief. Uh, clearly back in 1998 or 99, whatever it may be, the lot which in, in question, that's before you this evening, was specifically created as an undersized lot solely for the purpose of residential use. The original configuration of a lot which was split-zone encompassed 80,000 square feet. If it had not been subdivided, we might not be having this conversation this evening. The property owner at that time owned the entire 80,000 square feet, sought to subdivide it and sought to specifically create a lot in question with the specific representation to the board that they were going to utilize it as a residence. And as a matter of fact, that's what the use variance was all about. The use variance was all about the board finding that this property, which is the subject property, was more suitable and more in keeping with the master plan as a residential lot rather than as a commercial lot. So that subdivision was granted, uh, the variance was granted. Uh, the property has been continually utilized since that time for a residential use. Now this applicant comes before the board and is seeking a site plan approval to construct a commercial use, which admittedly is listed as a permitted use, uh, in the zone. But I think it was somewhat disingenuous. We go back in history as to the origins of how this was created. And, and more importantly, following Mr. Cuchero's comments, the requirements for a one-acre a lot are less than those which are required for a lot that's in conformity with the zoning requirement. So if you had the 80,000 square foot lot, you would have to have certain buffers which are greater than those which you have today. Uh, Mr. Thomas pointed out that the buffer is not only required from the property line, but also from the residential zone line, uh, which means that you've got to have buffering coming off of Clayton Road as well. Significantly, the ingress and egress onto this property is located on Clayton Road, which is clearly a residential street immediately across from, uh, the residential homes. And this would not have happened but for the fact that they reduced the size of the lot. So I've listened to the comments about impervious service, about parking and all those things. Yes, the, the applicant is building a small building, smaller building to accomplish that, but he is missing the big picture, that big picture saying that, uh, two acres are required, 80,000 square feet are required. Not only does he not satisfy that, but his predecessor in title is the one who created that undersized lot. And belatedly now, a new purchaser is seeking to in some way take advantage of that. My client lives immediately next door. You look at the configuration of that lot, all of those properties located to the west are residential, those located to the south are residential, those located to the northwest are residential. Uh, that which is located to the northeast, uh, we've got the Howell first aid squad, a use which is de minimis as far as traffic and the like. And for the last 20 years, and he in reliance upon purchasing his lot, was aware of the fact it was an existing subdivision which established the fact based upon the representations of the then-owner that the property was going to be utilized for a residential use. Now, if in fact, back in 1999, an applicant came forward and said, "I just simply want a minor subdivision and nothing else." At that time, he would have been creating, uh, basically a, a non-conforming situation. He would have been creating a lot to be utilized commercially of 40,000 square feet. In order to get over that argument, he made the representation that, "Yes, I'm going to create this undersized lot in accordance with your commercial zone, but I'm not going to use it commercially. I have a residential use intended on it," and that's what he did. Thank you.
Yes, I'll try to be brief as well. Uh, while the hardship suffered in this case may be self-created as my client does step into the shoes of his predecessor, strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance, in this case the 80,000 square foot requirement, in view of the property's unique characteristics, will impose a hardship that will inhibit the extent to which the property can be utilized. Any other permitted use, whether it is a medical center, a bank, or retail use, would have the same problem. It's impossible to meet the lot area requirement. The other permitted uses in the HD zone are even more intense than that what is, uh, proposed for the use of the property. It's not the building size that's driving the variance. Property was subdivided in February of 1999, it's 19 years ago. Since then, the township's gone through at least two, possibly three master plan reviews, and they haven't changed the zoning of Lot 3401. HD1 use is therefore consistent with the master plan. It probably should have been rezoned to HC, but it was not, and we can't even address that. It's not like my client's predecessor subdivided a conforming lot either. The subdivision was along zone line. Uh, it was always a split-zone lot. There's no way to cure a deficiency. You have the commercial on one side, the residential on the other. And as to the frontage variance, uh, it is a corner lot with frontage on Clayton where the access does comply. Exceeds the requirement by 70 feet. We are again deficient on Kent Road, but we couldn't legally put an access on Kent Road. It's too close to the intersection and too close to the first aid squad. In addition, the applicant has undoubtedly addressed the concerns of his neighbor and those expressed by the board through the previous meetings. He's relocated the building to eliminate the side yard setback variance. He's increased the buffer to the residential neighbor to 30 feet. Tonight, he's agreed to vermin and plant it to the satisfaction of your tree expert and your planner. and your planner. We've relocated the dumpster further from the property line, so it's no longer near the residential area. And the application complies in all other respects except for lot area and lot frontage, which again is existing conditions that cannot be checked. In this particular case, we're taking a pre-existing non-conforming use of the house and replacing it with a permitted use. The proposed permitted use is probably the least intrusive of all permitted uses and would have the least effect on the neighboring property. It's only open, the office building's only open during normal business hours, it's closed most weekends and evenings, it doesn't generate any noise, it's a passive use as opposed to the retail or medical center or bank or other permitted uses in the HD zone. I think this particular applicant has got a long way to address the concerns of his neighbor, and I would ask that the board grant the application as before.
Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of comments, just from the legal perspective. The applicant has requested C variance relief for a few conditions that are not compliant with our ordinance. The first is the C1 variance, which is the hardship variance. I disagree with Mr. Cohen that that hardship variance is available. As Mr. Cohen stated, the condition was self-created. It was created by the prior owner, who got a variance to have an undersized lot. The reason there's an undersized lot is because that prior owner created it. So it's a self-created hardship. Further, when you're dealing with undersized lot cases, there's a series of cases called basically the Dolemeier cases, where an applicant is required to make some effort to cure the non-compliant undersized lot condition. There's been no testimony that they offered to sell their lot to any adjoining property owner, or offered to buy any adjacent lot. That's required in order to make a hardship case for an undersized lot. So I think because of the Dolemeier criteria, and also because the applicant created the very condition which they claim, you know, is impossible to put a conforming use, I don't think as a matter of law that the hardship argument is available to them. I do agree that the C2 criteria, which is called the flexible variance, that is available to them. So they've made their case as to why different goals of planning that are enumerated in Section 2 of the Municipal Land use Law have been advanced. So it's for the board to determine whether they agree. Objector has placed their planning testimony on the record as to why there are no goals of planning that have been advanced. Also, the board has to take into account that when granting a C2 variance, there has to be some public benefit, not just a private benefit to the applicant. So the board has to find, not only are the goals of planning being advanced, but they're being advanced in a way that benefits the other neighbors in the zone and not just purely themselves. As I stated before, and nobody disputes, the undersized lot was created by the prior owner, who made an application to the zoning board that that lot was an appropriate size for a residential dwelling. And that's why the lot is there, because it was appropriate for a residential dwelling. So I think, as I stated before, that when considering the negative criteria, the board can take into account that, you know, they would have had an ability to create a conforming buffer, but for the fact that they created, you know, the undersized lot. So I don't think they get to create an undersized lot and then take advantage of the fact that our ordinance says less than an acre is a different buffer, and that's the end of the analysis. They can certainly ask for it, but I think you get to consider that there would have been a different buffer, you know, had there not been a subdivision created just for a residential use. I think that's something you can consider in the negative criteria. You may find that, you know, it is an adequate buffer, but I don't think that the argument that we're under an acre, that's the end of the story, is appropriate. You get to consider that they created a situation that was meant for a commercial, well, I'm sorry, for a residential use. I think you get to consider that as part of the analysis. All of the testimony about other buildings on Route 9, from a legal perspective, I think, you know, it's entitled to very little weight because it doesn't deal with the situation on this particular piece of property. So, as I said, it's really for you to analyze, I believe, on the C2 criteria, you know, which planner had the more persuasive, you know, argument. So, you know, that's the guidance I can give you. I don't know if that was clear enough. If anyone has any questions, I can certainly answer them.
The C1 variance pertains really to the buffer.
Well, the C1, they're arguing that because of the size of the lot, they can't comply with the requirements, which include the buffer, but it also includes the lot frontage.
But isn't it also the size of the building that they want to put on that lot? For if it was a smaller-sized building, they might have been able to...
Yes, you can take that into account.
Okay.
Yeah. But I don't even think you get there on the hardship, because it's self-created and there was no effort to cure it.
Does the applicant, does the applicant want to provide any testimony if there was?
I mean, you'd have to reopen the hearing, because they've closed it, and, you know, they would get to prove, there'd be cross-examination and, you know, opening it to the public again.
Mr. Vice Chair, I have a quick question for Ron. Does the applicant have an obligation to cure, you said, under law?
Yes. If they're, under the hardship standard, it's the Dolemeier case and several others, that they either have to, you know, it doesn't have to be successful, but they have to attempt to either sell their property to an adjacent property owner, or purchase an adjacent property owner's property in order to cure the, you know, the non-compliant lot area.
Questions and comments from the board? So I have a question, because I'm hearing a lot of previous testimony. I'm curious, is the house that was allowed to be built on Lot 3402 was a result of the subdivision of Lot 34, was that a fully conforming?
According to the resolution, because that's in the residential zone, it was conforming. But the lot that was in the commercial zone was not conforming with the lot area requirements for the commercial zone. The minutes reflect that they were trying to use the residential standard for both lots, because they were both going to be residential lots. But the lot that was in the HD1 zone was not compliant for lot area.
So there was no variance that was requested for the existing home on Lot 3402?
The use variance was just for the portion of the lot that was in the HD1 zone.
But it met side setback criteria and...
There are no criteria that are relevant, because the criteria for the HD1 zone only apply to uses that are permitted in the HD zone. So setbacks and things like that are considered as part of, or swept up, subsumed within the grant of the use variance.
The reason I'm asking is because it looks like that home, which is occupied by the objector, appears to be very close to the property line. And if we're going to have a conversation about that buffer, whether it's adequate or not to apply to the C1 variance, I'm just personally curious if that side setback was maintained.
I missed part of that, but what I can say about it is, the lot that was created that was in the residential zone did not require a use variance because it was permitted.
Okay.
And they did have setback requirements, but there's nothing in the resolution to say that they were not compliant in any respect with that. It appears, based upon the resolution, that that lot's compliant, but the lot that was created for the HD1 zone, you know, needed the use variance.
But if that house was built after 1998 and 1999, would there be a subsequent record that would tell us whether that was a fully conforming?
It would not be, because the lot, the way we defined, well, actually, was it a, I don't know if it was a square footage requirement or an acre requirement.
Okay.
If the requirement said one acre, then they would not be. If the requirement said 40,000, then, you know, they would be compliant.
Okay.
Because we only changed the way we define acre. If it was a square footage requirement, then, you know, that's a different story.
But to also answer your question, if when they came in to build on Lot 34.02, which is the residential lot...
Yep.
They would have needed to seek bulk relief if it did not comply.
And we don't know whether they did or not, or...
At this point, I don't know. We don't have that information. But that relief was not granted in connection with the 99 approval. No relief was granted in connection with that.
Does Mr. Gazarovski know?
We could call my client back. I personally don't know, but we could call Mr. Stravens back and ask him whether it was necessary for him to do that, or whether we secured a building permit without the necessity of getting a variance, so.
I'm curious.
He's got a certificate of occupancy, and if you wish, they ask him the question, that's fine.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind the opportunity to ask the question.
That's fine. Let's call him back, and he can respond to it.
Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
John Stravens, S-T-R-E-V-E-N-S.
And just for the record, you are the owner of which property?
Well, Clayton Road, right next door.
Okay, you heard the question. Do you have an answer?
No, I was all built, it was conforming. I didn't need any...
Was it built when you bought it?
No, I built it. I'm a builder.
Okay.
So you met the side setback specifically?
Yeah, I didn't need any variances or any, I built with what was, I'm like 15 foot off that property line.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen, just on that issue exclusively, do you have any questions?
Just one, when you did get the permit to build your house, you knew that Lot 3401 was open?
That's not the question that he asked, that the board asked him. The board asked him a question about...
He had a variance.
Right.
I understand that, but I'm restricted to that, one question?
The public, I mean, I'm not so sure I really object to it, but the public portion has been closed, and Mr. Stravens previously testified.
I did ask Mr. Stravens that question previous on the record, and he did answer it previous on the record, so I guess it's on the record anyway.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm satisfied, thank you.
If you want to ask him the question again, you can. But I read the transcript, he gave testimony.
You've addressed my concern.
Ron, how much weight has to be taken on the traffic testimony that was given by the objector's attorney? As far as Kent Road, and how much traffic goes on it, and that Howe First Aid Squad is the minimum?
Well, certainly, at the end of the day, it's up to the board, but we're talking about a permitted use. So whatever kind of traffic is generated, presumably was taken into account by the governing body when it allowed the use. The traffic also doesn't speak to the relief associated with lot area or lot frontage. So I think from a legal perspective, it's not particularly relevant for the, you know, the relief that's being asked. In terms of the site plan, it's assumed that there would be that level of traffic because it's a permitted use.
There were a couple of things in addition to the comments of the traffic that I'm not sure that the objector's attorney or his professional really addressed to my satisfaction. I heard some comments that the first aid squad building being a de minimis use, I'm not sure that's true. The answer, 3,000, 4,000 calls a year with ambulances leaving there with lights and sirens on 20, 30 times a day, I wouldn't call that de minimis. I also heard some testimony about the appropriateness of an exit driveway on Clayton facing a residential road. I think we have that exact same situation, not at the Target facility, but within several hundred feet, including the Pizza Hut restaurant that's right there with a significant exit that leaves onto Kent Road directly across the street from the R3 zone. And if you go a little further south, the biggest example of that is a Medical Arts Building, which does not have frontage on Route 9, and arguably, the major entrance for that is on Kent Road directly across the street from a house on Kent Road in the R3 zone. So I'm not sure that that testimony bore a lot of weight, in my opinion, relative to whether a commercial use is applicable for that zone. I also don't understand why at the time, in 1998 and 1999, if the planning board felt so strongly, the zoning board felt so strongly that it should have been considered only for residential use, I'm not aware of any recommendation that they made back to the governing body to rezone it accordingly, which has been the custom since I became an elected official in 2009. We regularly receive correspondence and year-end reports of lots and cases that came up where there was consideration that they requested to give to the governing body for rezoning parcels that didn't appear to comply with master plan elements or applications that they had heard during the year. So I find it completely suitable that a commercial use would be included in this lot.
I just want to also add the fact that a previous application, that was before the zoning board, required that a traffic light be put on Kent Road and Lanes Mills, because it was acknowledged that Kent Road traffic was increasing and becoming much more of a major road rather than a collector road on Artoria Road. So I just was finding a little conflict in the testimony that Kent Road, or that they were trying to portray that Kent Road is not a heavily trafficked road. I don't know if that, I don't know if I'm assuming that, but considering how much traffic is now on Kent Road, I was just finding the conflict that, you know, we were focusing on Route 9 and not Kent Road, so.
Also, I just, and it's why I said this to Mr. McFarland, that it's not really a case about suitability. I mean, that's what it's zoned for. There's already been a decision that the site is suitable for a commercial use. I mean, the case is really about whether their inability to provide, you know, or the fact that they've created a lot that's smaller, and you're not getting a 50-foot buffer, whether, you know, that promotes zoning, or it doesn't, and whether there's negative or positive criteria. We, you know, like I said, there's an ordinance. That lot is clearly suitable for a commercial development, so says the governing body. I mean, the prior owner didn't think so, and the zoning board didn't think so, but our zoning says it is suitable.
So that gets me back to the application and this issue of the rear buffer. And the reason I asked about the right-side setback of Lot 3402 is not knowing where that property line actually existed, looking at it on a Google Earth image. It appears as though the majority of those existing trees, if that's where the side property line is, the majority of those are, trees are going to be gone because of this application. So that kind of gets me to the discussion as to whether or not this buffer is adequate, 30 feet, 50 feet, whatever the number happens to be. But even as proposed, I'm still struggling with whether or not I would consider it adequate and what this is going to look like from the westerly residential neighborhood looking to the side of this office building. I heard some, well, actually, I haven't heard anything specifically definitive. I was listening to it. I'm not even sure whether it's a three- or a four-season planting. I haven't really heard anything about the buffering. I haven't really heard anything as to whether we think putting a fence on there is a good idea or not. I heard the chief make comments about vandalism and graffiti, which I certainly could see. I'm curious, from our professionals, is there any other options that would enhance the proposed 30-foot buffer, understanding we're never going to get it to have the features of what we would consider if it was a 50-foot buffer, but are there options that get us close? We've had these conversations at multiple applications, and I'm looking to hear what we can do to get the most benefit out of this.
Yeah, I think that, you know, an enhanced landscaping plan that would include plantings that are four-season, that are as dense as possible, in conjunction with some birmingham, especially to the height of the headlights of like a typical vehicle. I think the birmingham's going to get you 100% along a certain horizon in terms of a visual screening, and the plantings, if they're done correctly in terms of the understory and the upper story, in terms of maturity of the plantings, it can go a long way. I don't know if it'll get to 100%, but that is where the birmingham comes in. So I think some combination can get you very close to a fence.
Okay. Did the applicant agree to meet whatever requirements that would be asked of our professionals in order to get as close to the 100% barrier as possible?
Yes, if we weren't clear enough during testimony, but I believe we did say that, and we went through an example of how to get close to 100%, but yes, we would be happy to do that and work with your professionals and have it go. to do that and work with your professionals and have them do it.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Rezerv.
I'll just take, you know, it's easy to kind of get lost in the details of something like this. When we step back, you have a, a neighbor that's going to be 30 feet away from a two-story building. That's from me to Mr. Gatto, almost, maybe a little further away. I don't know. Maybe by the wall over there. Did the, did the parties discuss at all the possibility of a 50-foot buffer?
The parties haven't discussed very much, to be perfectly honest with you. Very little discussion about if there's a, you know, we don't really have a resolution because they don't want to use.
So they, Mr. Gazarovski, over here.
Yeah, we were here last time. We went from a 10-foot buffer to a 30.
To a 30, right, right.
In Birmingham.
Would, would the opposition be open to a 50-foot buffer?
Just a comment with regard to the, one concern I do have is that, given the circumstances in this case, I don't think it's appropriate to consider a resolution and making it subject to the condition of law of the applicant satisfying their professional in regard to the buffering, because then that takes it out of the public realm. That would mean that my client would not have any impact as to what's being proposed, whether it's satisfactory or not.
On that, Mr. Chairman, actually, I was just discussing that issue with, with our professionals. I think that's a very valid point.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
So, so would we be able to put technical testimony on the record as to what those plantings or what should be in that berm specifically so that it's fully available?
If you get very specific like that, you might be able to, if, I mean, I don't know how the board's going to vote, but if it's inclined to grant an approval, I would say that something like that would need to be very specific.
Okay.
If not, I think Mr. Gazarovski is correct that, you know, and, and if we do that, I think we have to hear comments from Mr. Gazarovski on, on what his client, you know, thinks about, you know, or what anyone on that side, you know, thinks about those things. Frankly, I think I'd be most comfortable that if we were going to do it, that they meet with our board professionals and there's some, you know, sort of concept that we could have at a subsequent meeting limited just to that, you know, so that there's a visual depiction of what it is and everyone can, can see it and, you know, there's a fair opportunity for Mr. Gazarovski to digest it and offer comments.
Can I just comment briefly on that? Would you go with a 50-foot buffer or you go with the creation of a six-foot height berm? Either of those two are going to impact either parking or possibly impact stormwater drainage because.
Well, we'll see what it impacts, and that's why I'm, I'm saying that there should be, I don't know that we can grant something like that tonight versus
I agree.
Have Mr. Cohen's, you know, professionals deal with ours and then, you know, have a full understanding of what it means at a subsequent meeting.
I agree with that.
And I'll try and sell the property to Mr. Cohen.
It's my opinion that it sounds like the, getting this building as far away from the property line as possible is something that the objector would be most happy about.
I don't know what the objector would be most happy about.
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't answer my question before, too.
I suspect I do know, and it's not that.
I'm still waiting for the.
Well, the reality is, is they've already done that, right? That's what, that's what got us from the last case to here, right?
The reason why I say that is, is the objector's attorney and planner used the term of 50-foot buffer requirement a lot in their testimony.
That's what your ordinance says.
So.
Well, I think what our ordinance says is that if it's below the acre, there's a different requirement, and if it's above the acre, you know, there's a different requirement. And that's why I said that, you know, it's not that the buffer needs relief. I think the fact that they created the situation which altered the requirement is something to take into account is in the negative criteria in the lot area variance. So I would not say that there's a 50-foot requirement on, in this plan. It comes into play because they changed the nature of the requirement by getting the original variance and subdivision.
Again, and I would only suggest this if the board was inclined, all other things being equal, to grant the approval, but I would note that the building is not 30 feet off the property line. It's 50, almost 58 feet off the property line. There's a clear 30-foot buffer and then a 10-foot wide basin access area. So all of those together, I would hope or think that the engineers in the room would be able to take the best use of that area to provide something near the 100% visual obstruction that we're trying to get to. Again, all things being considered with drainage and everything else. However, for the, for the lack of brevity, if the board is not inclined to grant it for, grant the approval, all other things being considered, I think that could be a waste of time that I don't think we should ask the professionals to do. So me personally, I don't have a problem with the application subject to the redesign of that, that buffer and available visual obstructions to prevent the hardship to the owner of Lot 3402. But I, but I respectfully don't want the professionals to waste their time, money, and effort on behalf of the applicant to do that if they're going to come back in three weeks and we're just going to deny it anyway.
When you say reconstructive buffer?
Well, there's nothing, I, I don't see anything there now. I see some plantings. It's not bermed. I, I don't think we should be in a position to ask for the berm now because I do agree it will affect some drainage issues. I don't know about what they have planned for the front end of that parking area where those five or 10 spaces are along Clayton Road.
Are you, are you suggesting that there should be some type of elevation done or some type of rendering completed? Sightline, sightline analysis?
Yeah, I think there needs to be additional specific testimony other than, as Mr. Gazarovski noted, I, I don't think we should just leave this to rely on the, make an approval and then rely on the professionals. I, I'd want to know what it is. I'd like to, I'm, I'm not a tree expert. I can look at the drawing on sheet seven and I could see what the plantings are, but I don't see what those plantings are in cross-sectional dimensions, so I don't know whether a TP5 is eight feet high, 10 feet high, two feet high, or six inches high. It's not my job to know that. But, but I would want to hear some testimony on that if the applicant was so inclined to go down that path.
Excuse me, Mr. Gatto, are you suggesting that any vote on this should be withheld until the applicant comes back, the fully engineered plan?
Well, I think what he's saying is if the board is agreeable to that, then yes, you know, the board should see it, you should see it, the members of the public should see it.
I mean, I'm, I'm the only board member I think we spoke so far, so if there's board members that are opposed to the application in general, I, I'm fine with hearing that. Me personally, I'm not adversely opposed to the application in general, except for that one specific issue that I would not mind deferring final approval for that testimony.
So, Mr. Chair, I think what would be appropriate based upon former Marigato's statements is maybe just go around and, and see whether the board is in agreement with that, and then we can, you know, the professionals will get together and we can carry this to a subsequent night, at which point the only thing that we would be talking about in terms of the public session would be that buffering plan. It would not be open to revisit anything else or to bring anything new up. It would be limited exclusively to that.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions or a small vote?
I guess it's just comments, I don't think it's a phone.
I mean, I'll, I'll make a statement. I, I agree with Mr. Gatto, Mayor Gatto, but I would like to see it be as a render, rendering, along with the plan, and both a, a seasonal winter environment and also a summer environment, a full four-season rendering.
Is there anyone who objects to the chairman and former Marigato's recommendation?
I'm just having a little bit of trouble with this one. The fact that the applicant didn't cure back in when they could have, and if they did cure, or if they didn't, rather, it would be, the 50-foot buffer would apply, right?
Yeah. Well, that's not that they, the cure, it's that they created
Right.
A lot for a specific use, and then, you know, by doing that, now trying to bring in a different use
And they're not.
Under different rules.
Right. And they don't have to do the 50-foot lot, 50-foot buffer.
Right, right.
Because of that.
Right. But as I said, I think that speaks to the negative criteria for the lot area, but that is for the C1 criteria, you know, also. So, well, I guess my question would be, do you find any value in them going back to revisit the buffer and design it for something closer to 100%? Because I think what Marigato was, was reasonably trying to avoid was extra time and expense for a futile effort.
Yeah, I get it, absolutely.
Yeah.
I'd hate to have them come back and then we just, you know, all that time and, and money, too, so.
We don't want.
It's tough. Tough one.
I heard testimony that originally it was, only had to be a 10-foot buffer. Is that correct?
No. Originally, they had a lot that was something around 80,000 square feet. They created a sub, and, and if that lot stayed the way it was and they came in now, it would be a 50-foot buffer. But because they, or the predecessor in title, went in for a subdivision, they changed the rules for themselves, but they got the subdivision because they were doing a residential development, not a commercial development. So the issue is, they're coming back and trying to take advantage of an ordinance, you know, where they originally got relief because they were doing a different use. So what we're, what I'm saying is, as a legal matter, the fact that, you know, they only require a 10-foot buffer, you have to consider the fact that they created that lot and changed the rules. But they changed the rules based upon their representation it was going to be a residential use, not a commercial use.
Okay.
And I think I heard testimony that the, this 30-foot buffer is mounted a couple feet from the parking lot?
No, the, the testimony was that the, the grade of the parking lot is approximately three feet higher than the grade at the property line. And then, and then there was some follow-up questioning from the board's planner if we would incorporate some birmingham, and we agreed that we would. So the plan does not show any birmingham right now, but we did agree that we would incorporate, and I believe I said two to three-foot height could be incorporated.
Okay.
And then we also agreed to provide fencing to provide, you know, close to 100% protection and specifically protection from, from, from headlights from the vehicle. So we did agree to those concessions.
A question for the tree expert.
Well, it was, it was agreed to, but only in very glossy terms. It wasn't agreed as to how they were going to do it, just the, the goal of doing it was agreed to, but there's no specifics associated with it at this point.
Right, correct.
But the applicant would not object to coming back and showing the specific details on that one.
Well, we got you. We're just trying to understand whether that makes a difference to the board. So I get, I, we got on the fence and two who support it. Is there any, is anybody else who wants to weigh in?
I support it as well.
Okay.
I support it.
All right, so I think that's, that's a majority. So Mr. Cohen, Mr. Gazarovski, what we'll do is we'll give an opportunity for that to happen. Mr. Cohen, who from your side will put that together? Is that Mr. McFarland? Is it somebody else?
My office will put it together.
Okay, Mr. McFarland, what kind of time do you think you need to, to get that together in consultation with the board's professionals?
Well, what I, I think, I think what I, what I'd like to do during this process is maybe come up with a couple of different alternatives that I can send to, to CME to take a look at before I submit a formal plan, so we can hopefully get
Right, that's what we assumed would happen.
Get some feedback from, from them before we submit a formal plan to the board. And my, my thought is hopefully we come back here and say, hey, we've sat down and agreed.
Right, no, that's, that's what our intention is as well.
So hopefully I can get something to them in, say, three weeks from today.
All right, so maybe two meetings from now.
That'll include the rendering as well?
I'm going to say I hope so, but I want to see how, how the process goes.
We'll submit a rendering, but it's an issue to the board.
And, and Mr., and Mr. Cohen, it goes without saying that we'll get that to the objector's attorney, so the objector would have a chance to review that, and hopefully between the two parties, that might open up some dialogue to maybe some resolution that wasn't there before.
That'd be great. So, Mr. McFarland, the next feasible meeting based upon your require, you know, your estimates would be March 1st. Is that too quick? Is that on target? Because then we would have March 15th.
March 1st, that would mean I would, would I have to have a plan submitted 10 days prior to March 1st?
Yes.
So I'm going to say that.
What, is March 15th better?
I don't want to commit to March 1st.
Okay. We can do March 15th?
I think I.
I'm sorry, Todd, I didn't hear you.
I'm asking, Eileen, do I have something on?
No, I have nothing scheduled March, after February. I have nothing scheduled.
I have something scheduled March 15th somewhere.
I may have something scheduled March 15th also elsewhere, I believe.
The next meeting after that would be April the 5th.
April 5th, I'm out of town. Doesn't work.
April 19th.
Unless something changes.
Well, we can set you down for April 19th, and then if something changes, we can, we can reschedule.
Can we make that March 1st?
I mean, you can schedule us for March 1st, and we can see if we can make it, if that's agreeable, but I don't.
I don't, I don't think we care. We just don't want to.
Right.
You know, it's, we're just trying to work with, you know, how much time you need to do it.
I don't want to make a promise that we can't, can't satisfy. We could try for March 1st, but like I said, then I have to have plans in 10 days prior.
This is not, this is not like missing your kid's wedding or bermets or something. I mean, we're not going to be offended if you can't do it on March 1st.
Then you can schedule us for March 1st, and we'll try to make submission by, you know, February 20.
All right, so why don't we do that? All right, so.
I need an extension of time.
Todd, will you give us an extension of time?
Yes, due the end of March.
Can I make just one request? If, if the gentleman can't make it for March 1st.
We will let you know.
Yeah, but not only that, you'd have to let me know like at least 10 days prior to March 1st.
Well, we'll cer, we'll certainly know 10 days prior because we'll either have a plan or we won't.
Then what we should do, I think, is still keep the public hearing after March 1st and just announce at that meeting the next date.
Well, that's what we have to do because we're going to carry this to a date specific, and then we would have to carry it again.
Unless we don't have anything else scheduled for March 1st, though, right?
Well, we would still have to at least put it on the web and, you know, announce it in some manner. So the application of Joseph Wilhelm, case number SP-1035, be carried to the board's March 1st, 2018 meeting, 7 o'clock here at Town Hall. There'll be no further notice to property owners or other interested parties. So if you receive the notice in the mail, excuse me, you will not receive another notice. This is your notice that it's being carried to March 1st. Also, as you heard, there will be revised plans that are being submitted. You can contact Eileen's office 10 days prior to see if those plans have come in or not. If they haven't, then, you know, the likelihood is we would be carrying this application again.
And I would put that on the agenda because I would know more.
Correct. Yeah. All right, so that's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. Favor?
All right.